The monthly and advertised stated monthly meeting of the lower morning township board of commissioners April 12th, 2022. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Public participation on the agenda items we take in as each item is discussed and we also have open public questions at the end. First is internal affairs committee under item A, review and consider minutes of March 8th, 2022. Any of the commissioners have any comments or corrections? Hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of March 8th, 2022. There's been motion and second to approve the minutes of March 8th, 2022. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Under item B, review and consider April 2022 bill list. Any of the commissioners have any questions or concerns? No questions? Any questions from the public? Then I'd like the motion to consider and prove that April 2022 bill list. It's a motion and second to approve the April 2022 bill list. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, I said thank you. Under item C, review and consider environmental consultant appointment resolutions. So to give you some background, Commissioner Odner, myself, Chris Hoffman, we met with PERC, which is the Pennsylvania Ecological Restoration Trust. We met. Was there to discuss possible relationship to use them for services as an environmental recommendation council to help the township with their reviews and things like that. And they agreed to do so. They sent us a letter of understanding. And before us tonight is to approve a couple of resolutions for their appointment as a township consultant and also their fee schedule. Manager Hoffman, you want to add to that?
No, I don't believe I have anything to add. It was a comprehensive talk.
Great. Any commissioners have any questions? Any questions from the public? Then I'd like to make a, I'd like to ask for approval for resolution number 22 dash 21, which is to appoint the PERC as the professional environmental consulting services to lower world and township. Is a motion is second to approve resolution number 22 dash 21. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, I have. The next resolution is number 22 dash 22 and it's for their fee schedule. And I believe their hourly rate is 120 per hour.
That's correct. And just a quick summary on that, I'm sorry, I should have jumped in earlier with this. Based off of the different services, the $120 per hour is the maximum rate that will be charged for any other staff that would be billed at $80 an hour. And the premise of this second resolution is to, as Commissioner Serkin alluded, is to allow for the reimbursement of those fees through the development process when any applicant signs a professional services.
Any commissioners have any questions about resolution number 22 dash 22? From the public? Then I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number 22 dash 22. The motion and second to approve resolution number 22 dash 22. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, I have a thank you. Under item D, administration board manager.
So for this evening, I guess I'll keep my comments limited as we have several upcoming agenda items that are either presentations or other bigger items that we've been working on. But I did just want to note some of the bigger project work that's related either to our 2022 capital budget or some other future plans. So in the last couple of weeks, starting at the authority meeting, we had a discussion, introduction of a concept with the authority of expanding their charter to allow for the collection of stormwater fee. This is a part of a bigger consideration of the township's obligations with our annual stormwater permit and projects that we are going to be mandated to do once that is issued. So we've been trying to work on funding sources to be able to address those projects. So this is just initial conversation with the authority as the township itself has not been legally empowered to collect such a fee at this point. That, that the municipal authorities act does allow that for authorities. So we introduced that concept and received a generally favorable review. So that there's next tasks that we'll be able to follow up with. And the, I guess the biggest premise for this and the timing marking for such a thing is that the, on the sanitary sewer side compared to the storm sewer side, the township's debt service for constructing the sewer system is nearly paid off. So we'll be able to reallocate an existing fee that is related to sanitary sewers and apply that for the stormwater concept and establish a division within public works to better address these types of projects and these obligations that we have. So that's something that we'll be talking about in much greater detail over time, but at least wanted to reiterate and introduce that to the board and to those in attendance this evening. And then another one that is out of our 2022 capital budget is I did send a memo to our planner for two, to request a proposal for a facilities review. So taking a look at all of our township owned buildings and properties, seeing what services they need are provided today, what are things we need to prepare for in the future? And also some look at support of downtown business district, our emergency services with the fire company here, being able to turn that into an initial report as to plans and concepts for how to address our building facility needs in the future. And again, this is another one that is coming up because of upcoming financial flexibility. The township's debt service, so independent event sewer construction projects will be primarily paid off come 2026. So being able to plan for these things now, understanding that we have facility needs that we can plan for in the future, starting a planning process now will put us in a position to be able to make recommendations for the board to make decisions. So just wanted to let you know that I'm beginning to make progress on those two concepts.
Any questions for the rest? Assistant manager Lee.
The only item to refer on tonight is that the plan for sidewalks at Lower Walsh Road that will be started very soon, we have a meeting today onsite with the two property owners, the township engineer, public works director and the contractor. So construction for that will begin within the next few weeks. The lower wealth sidewalk is right on Walshburg where it meets Station Avenue. It's a small strip to connect existing sidewalks and trails that are already there. So this should be a very good project. It's funded by the county and we hope to have all of that before summer.
Anything else?
Birthday, April 22nd. Commissioner Kurtz will probably scan on that more as she's been doing a lot work on that. And summer rec program registration has opened and we are collecting registration right now. And April, there will not be a planning mission.
Great. Any questions for you though? Sorry. Finished?
That's it.
Any questions for the assistant manager? On the public? Tax collector's report. I don't think the tax collector is with us today, but does anybody have any questions on the tax collector's report? Okay, if not, I'd like to request that that report be accepted as submitted. And under item F is liaisons, no civil service meeting, and I continue to attend the school board meetings at virtually. And that completes internal affairs. The chair now recognizes Commissioner Curran, the chair of the community development committee.
Thank you, chairman. First item on my agenda is review sketch plan. It's Wang 3262 Huntington Pike, number 2201. First, I just want to review this to the public that a sketch plan review is in front of us this evening. For this applicant, the plans are either approved or denied at this stage, but rather, rather, it's an opportunity to provide feedback and information to the applicant and the representative this evening. So we'll start out. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Zach Severdson. I'm an attorney with Eastburn and Gray. I'm here tonight with Larry Byrne, who's the engineer on the, on the application. As Ms. Kurtz stated, we're here tonight on a sketch plan proposal that we submitted to the township. Essentially, we're not looking for any specific approvals from you guys tonight, from, from gentlemen and ladies, for any specific approvals. We're really just looking for feedback. We've come in, this is a pre being heavily engineered plan, obviously following the feedback and following the information that we get from you all. This evening, we will go back, we will do some more engineering improvement and eventually hopefully submit a further revised and engineered preliminary plan that would eventually be before you four approve. So this evening, the property at issue is 3262 Huntington Pike. It's essentially a little over four and a half acres in size. Currently, there's one single family dwelling on the property. We're proposing to subdivide the property into five separate lots. One of the lots would contain the existing home and then four additional lots would then be improved with their own individual single family homes. The property is located in the M U R O mixed use residential office district of the township. We appeared before the planning commission on March 24th, 2022. So a few weeks ago, we received some feedback from Mr. Woodrow, the township engineer. We've received some review letters from CKS, from the fire marshal, from the township traffic engineer McMahon. A letter from the Montgomery County Planning Commission, obviously a letter from Mr. Woodrow and from the township planner or two. I think that this evening, we're here, as I said, to really solicit some feedback from you all before we proceed further with more in-depth engineering of the plan. So with that, I don't know how we'd like, how would you like to proceed? Go through the review letters or does the board have any, does the board have any comments at this time?
This is a presentation.
Your presentation first and then the review letters.
Sure. Okay. Good evening. My name is Larry Byrne. This is the owner, Mr. and Mrs. Wang. We have, you know, the property here, this is Carriage Lane. The lots will all be serviced with public water and sewer. What we're proposing to do is have one flag lot, we're actually two flag lots, but one driveway right across from Carriage Lane for accessing the property. This is where the existing driveway is here now. So we would just be improving the driveway and having the flag lots in the back. And then this lot over here would take its own access off of Huntington Pike. You know, we're aware of the couple zoning issues that were brought up in the R2's, the planner's review letter about the need for variance for the flag lots. And that's, I guess, one of the main things that we had any feedback, if there was any thoughts on that as opposed to, you know, an alternate plan. So that's the one main thing. And then I guess the other item that was brought up, the first comment in the township engineers letter about whether or not there would be a requirement for significant road improvements to Huntington Pike along the property frontage with the ordinance requires significant widening curb and sidewalk. And in this location, you know, there's an embankment and there's no widening curb and sidewalk anywhere in this area. Plus Huntington Pike, as you know, is a state road and ultimately anything would require a PENDOT permit. Had some initial conversations with PENDOT. I don't believe they'd be interested in any kind of significant improvements to this little section of Huntington Pike. So that was the main, you know, a couple of items for maybe some thought and consideration. As far as the lot sizes, they all comply. They're actually almost double the required minimum lot size. The lot minimum lot size is 18,750 square feet. And all these are a minimum of like 33, 35,000 square feet. So they're not minimum lot sizes. They all have, you know, basically almost double required minimum lot size. And as I mentioned, they'd all be serviced with public water and sewer. There's water right in Huntington Pike and then actually, as you know, the township's pump stations right here. Township authority has their own pump station. It's actually on the property. So there's no problem with getting access to any, you know, public water and sewer. We're not aware of any capacity issues. Yes.
Let me ask you a question. You had the review letters, right?
Yeah.
From Tim Woodrow, he raises an issue about increasing impervious and basically clear cut wood it is ground. Putting that aside though, if you have to go, and this board doesn't make that decision, but if you have to go to the zoning hearing board and they don't bring variances for those two flag lots, what's the plan going to look like then?
I think the alternative to the flag lots would be some sort of a cul-de-sac street. So as far as we understand, that would not require any variances would be a cul-de-sac. So I, I think that that's one of the issues that we're looking for feedback from the board this evening is, you know, is, is we feel that given the flag lot configuration and it would be less impervious, I think that it would have less impact overall in the area compared to having to put in a full, a full street. Obviously, you know, the, the level of improvements would be very different with a, with having to put in a full street. So, and then the other, the other potential variance that was identified in the review letters related to, from the density requirement. The township's ordinances require 1.1 unit per acre. And I think that when I did the math, it came, which would permit 4.978 units per, on the property. And we're proposing five, so it's about two hundredths of a, of a lot, I guess, would be the, the math. So those would be the two issues that we would potentially, exactly. Yes. Well, we, we would characterize it as de minimis, but that would obviously be up to the zoning hearing board.
Is there another plan shows cul-de-sac?
Yeah, we, we did prepare another plan that shows the cul-de-sac. And I did present it at the planning commission meeting. It was like, it's not a secret or anything. I have a copy. I could, I could show it to you if you want to take a quick look at it. It's like my thing, just a handout.
Well, you want feedback from the board?
Yes.
The board has any comments on the plan and preference. That's a pretty significant issue.
Right.
Especially the flag lots. So it's 4.52 acres and you're looking to build them for change, I think I wrote?
Yes, it's, so the area to the legal right ways, 4.5 acres. I'll, I'll show this to you. This is not the preferred.
Would the one lot still have its own drive to Huntington Pike direct with the cul-de-sac or? The lot to the right or the, the top of the page?
This one here.
That still have to maintain its own driveway or that be it?
Well, when we lay out the cul-de-sacs, we, we made it so that you could, we could maybe take a driveway and also here, that wouldn't have to have a separate one. But the required one would be along Huntington Pike. Just so that, to, to avoid having a single private driveway to Huntington Pike. But as I said, and as Zach also mentioned, you know, we feel that the cul-de-sac plan is a little bit more intensive use of the property. It's the same density, but the cul-de-sac more pervious surfaces and therefore more stormwater management, curb, sidewalk. So I think the, the flag lot provides a little bit more of a suburban or rural, you know, design of the property, more meeting with the low impact developments that everyone likes to talk about, or lower impact.
Three and five don't meet the required width?
Well, I don't believe it's five. I think he meant to say in his letter lots three and four, these two here. These is lots three and four.
Okay.
This is lot five. This lot five has the required frontage on Huntington Pike.
So it's three and four.
It's three. I think it's a type.
Would that change if you put the cul-de-sac in or no? You still all have to?
No, we, we put the cul-de-sac in. We, all the lots have plenty of frontage.
Because the frontage would go along the cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
But so these.
So if you do the cul-de-sac, you're avoiding extra variances, right?
Correct.
But you're adding to your stormwater management.
Well, we're adding additional impervious and more intensive land use. The, you know, there is more than the property, but it's, it's not as, there's some actual clear areas on there too. It's not 100% wood parcel.
Maybe I can jump in guys. I think there's three threshold issues that are before this one. I think the first is some opinion as to the validity of the flag lot request to the zoning hearing board. If we did not like the flag lot request, we would probably send John in opposition. So the flag lot becomes a very big component of what we're talking about tonight. The second is our environmental resource restriction. So when we're this, we talk about preservation of woodlands, resupplication slopes. And I think that analysis has to be done as to what amount, what percentage is, so what percentage of woodlands is being disturbed? Comparing that to our ordinance to make sure that we fully understand what other waivers or variances might otherwise be required. And the third is that road improvement obligation.
Yeah.
Because the ordinance clearly says that when you have a subdivision, the board of commissioners has the right to require widening, curving, sidewalk, stormwater improvements in the highway. We have waived that a couple of times in the past over at 205 Red Lion and up the Grasshopper. But in both of those instances, we took a fee in lieu of improvements. So in this case, the cost to improve is going to be very significant. There's a lot of earth to move, there's utility poles to move, you know, by the time you put widening in and curving and sidewalk, picking up $200,000. And so I think that number is a real component to the performer on the subdivision application from the owner's perspective. If the board were to impose that full value as a fee, it really could change the decision making of the owners. So I think those three components are in front of us tonight and we, you know, really should, I guess, seeking some direction as to an opinion of the board, do we want to see a cul-de-sac? The cul-de-sac disturbs much more land, probably runs afoul of our environmental resource restrictions. My suspicion is that when you put in a, a, a real home that might have some real shape to it, there's going to want to be some backyard spaces in a home to spread the water values and pools. We'd have to anticipate that clearing and that re-grading. And so at that point, when you look at the five lot subdivision and those expansion of the need for, you know, rear yard improvements as well as the stormwater management that would go along with it, it really becomes a clear cut lot, which, you know, go down that.
I, I agree, Tim. There would be, you know, obvious grading and improvements to the property. But the majority of the wood that this in the front, there's trees there, but it's basically open. There's no work going on here anyway because it's existing.
Right.
This here, this is open out here. There's a few trees. The majority of the woods are in the back here and along this area here, which I think we can preserve a fair amount. I don't have every tree located and we may do that, you know, to locate every tree. So if there's a specimen tree right here, well, then maybe that house gets moved. And this is just a concept plan. They're individual rectangular boxes and it's not intended to be a fully engineered plan at this point.
Yeah, I guess my, my thought is we need to anticipate, you know, what the end fire is going to build it.
Right.
It's probably going to be an architecturally unique hall. It's going to want to have, you know, some driveway with, you know, a sanitary garage. It's going to want to have a patio. And then we've got to build some kind of rain garden or underground basin to support that amount of impervious cover on each lot. And so pretty quickly, you're chewing up, you know, a fair amount of that land with the obligated improvements. And given the amount of topography, I think you're going to see a lot of, you know, gray change, a lot of contouring to be shaped in order to fit a large house on this deep slope. So I, maybe we're saving 10% of the woods, but I think we should be aware that this plan probably requires, you know, the vast majority of the wood is to be here.
All right. Could you show me lot two on there? Which one's lot two?
Where's this one here?
So there's a flood plain that actually runs north of that towards Huntington Pike?
No, they had that in the, there's, there's no flood plain on the property from the FEMA or like the firmets. There's no flood plain. There's no regulated flood plain. There's, there's a covert right here about that drains along this property, but it is not located on this specific site.
Right.
But there is.
It's on that, you were there inside of that, that lot two.
There's a, there's a covert that kind of crosses here. If you go down Huntington Pike, you'll, you'll, you'll see it because there's like a little piece of guard rail.
Yeah.
And then, you know, it drops off, but so that the covert that comes across Huntington Pike is, is here, but it goes like this way. Doesn't come onto the property.
It runs west to east, that covert system?
Yeah, it's, it's draining, you know, this way.
I got you.
Tim, was that drainage area something that we met with Chris Mendel, an area of interest to the?
It was to perfect. It was. Yeah. So certainly the, you know, there is a water course or signboard that is located just north of the property. And impacts that water course were important to PERC, you know, being obviously the environmental stewards of, of the land. And so we're concerned, they were very concerned about what kind of stormwater improvements would be installed to protect that water course. And certainly a desire to maintain a riparian buffer adjacent to that channel.
Right.
Was important to them.
Well, it's great. This is the pump station here. You go there, if you're familiar with the site, if you've ever been to the pump station, you, you know that there's, you know, the water course is like right here. So I think, you know, we could provide as required body ordinances, buffering or tree replacements if this needed, you know? If there is some kind of riparian buffer, it's just some additional vegetation.
Commissioner Kurtz, sorry, Joe, just real quick, just wanting to make sure where we are procedurally. Do we want the board asking questions now or do you want to receive the rest of our consultant?
Well, this is the picture I have. So I was up all night. This plan has kept me up all night. And since I saw it at the planning commission, I haven't really seen that much. And there's just so many natural features on this property. And it's, it's, it's heart wrenching to see both of these plans. And, and what, you know, this, this makes our job so much harder to try to make these decisions.
We look at these environmental features and it feels criminal to, to remove them. And I think you would have to if you wanted to put five homes, one of them to subdivide five ways. If you subdivide three ways, I can see it easily being able to, to fit on this property and
Three in the front.
And retain, you know, your red berries, copper, everything would be much more easy to retain, including the character of the land and the
And the integrity of our community.
Right.
Yeah, but and I.
If you build, do build these five and they do all the improvements that they're looking at, it will absolutely affect the water flow in that area. It will affect Burnathen as it goes down. It will affect Warren Three significantly. I just, you know, I, I want to make sure that everyone understands that.
And I, and, and I think that, I understand that. And I think that another is Mr. Woodrow was pointing out, there are, you know, potential fees in lieu related to road improvements and things like that that would be required here that may, you know, I, I don't know if there's something, situation that we can work out where we negotiate that in, in terms of the number of lots and.
Yeah, I, I understand the concerns and they, but the, the township just recently rezoned this property to the like residential office. So I think that would even offices would provide for.
Recently, what, 10 years ago?
Oh, that wasn't like two thousand fourteen.
Eight years.
Eight years to this month.
Oh, yeah. It's like the years just still seem to blend together.
The where the existing home is lot one. From from where I'm looking at on the plan, lot one. Going back to the two flat lots. There's steep slopes fifteen to twenty-five percent with natural features. Um I mean. Who knows, there could be even so much more than the tree line and the woodlands and the steep slopes could be wetlands and. Sloping down, you know, you have country lane, paper mill back there. I mean, there, that's just some beautiful area.
Zach, can I can I take something you said? I got a little.
Why don't you take this out?
But were you asking, if the developer came back in with less density? Would the board of commissioners be going to waive some of those improvements without fee? Was was that what I heard you asking?
I think that there's a, I think there's an economic component in terms of the number of lots that are being presented and the cost to improve. So I think that if that were something that that were very important to the board to preserve. That, you know, we could kind of rethink and rework this to a certain extent. I think that's, that's what I'm saying.
So let me just do some quick math for the board. So if we call the improvements to like two hundred thousand dollars. They fail the variance for flag lots, so they're building the cul-de-sac. Cul-de-sac cost to build, pick a number of five hundred thousand dollars. So if they, you know, if those improvements were not required, they'd be saving seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in improvement costs. So would that be worth the loss of two lots? Does that make the board feel comfortable?
I I I don't know the exact number. I don't know if it's, it's probably in the same scale, but I don't know what the numbers are.
It's somewhere, yeah, it's somewhere, maybe it's five hundred thousand, maybe it's.
Right.
Six, but it's not a hundred.
No, the cul-de-sac's expensive.
What's the width on the truck, whether it's three?
This, well, we, we put it at eighteen feet, but the fire marshal, he would require twenty feet, which would not be.
Probably why. That's a really good transition point to get the rest of our consultant comments before we keep asking questions. We have Melissa from R2 on Zoom and we have Bob Shali in the back ready to answer and provide those comments that will help guide. I think I just gave, I think.
I think we hit the highlights.
Okay. Okay, Melissa, we have Melissa.
Yes, hi.
Hi, Melissa.
Hi, hopefully you can hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks for letting me step in for Frank this evening. I appreciate uh being with you. You have our Mark second letter, I believe, in your agenda packets. Um and y'all stole my thunder because I was going to mention the flag lots. Um as being probably the uh the biggest uh one to point out of our comments. And you've already talked about that. The rest of our comments are just looking at the plan from a high level point of view, since it is a sketch plan at this point. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I think the comments have already been kind of discussed. You know, regards to the zoning, the environmental, natural resources.
Does anyone from our board have any questions for Melissa? Recording the R2. Uh review. They have some comments under subdivision zoning. Have to meet.
A lot of those issues will be, as we move along, the engineering process will refine and and address a lot of those issues.
We spoke about the natural features uh. That would need to be preserved and protected. We spoke, Tim spoke about the natural features, conservation requirement. Would affect the ability to develop the property as proposed. Any questions? Bob Shali, we can conclude now. Star Marshall, thank you.
So just quickly looking at the plan, um on the fire protection end of it. The we look usually look for two or three closest hydrants that are in the area. The closest hydrant right now is across the street on carriage and sits back with both the carriage. So if the two lots or these three lots here are actually involved in fire. The the first engine comes in and drops a supply line, which basically means it's a five inch supply line. That goes, would go across the street into Huntington Pike. And at the end of the five inch supply is a store, a storage connection. Which is about six or seven inches in diameter. Once that five inch line is in the driveway or in the street, across Huntington Pike. Additional apparatus will have a very hard time getting down that driveway into those homes because you can't run over the hose. So that's why I wanted at least twenty feet of the driveway. So if we were to use the five inch line. We get at the least the the five inch to one side of the driveway to get the additional apparatus down into the back of these two homes and possibly to this one here. What I suggest is calling Aqua and putting a hydrant at that entrance to those driveways to protect those three homes. It the additional lot here, we would use the hydrant off of Calvin. And if we took the hot, the water supply off of Calvin. The hose would be on this side of Huntington Pike, which will leave Huntington Pike open to get additional apparatus to these homes. Now. We can also, if the, if the, if the developer wants to make it either twelve or eighteen feet. My strong suggestion is to sprinkle the homes with a tank system. We could do that. Which the three hundred gallon system for each home, which the sprinkler system doesn't actually put the fire out, but at least it buys you time to get out. And we've done that before at homes and the township. But that all has to be approved by the chief and the officers of fire coming before anything gets done. If you put a cul-de-sac in, then I'm definitely going to want to hydrant at the cul-de-sac. And then under the fire code, I need some type of turnaround in that cul-de-sac to get the apparatus. Because in my memo. We want some sort of turning apparatus or turning area dimension in these back two homes here. And. Most of the time, you're not going to see us. You're going to see the. UPGS driver, you're going to see the animals and he's, they still need to get in, turn around again. Back and out is going to take some time.
It would be like a, I'm sorry, like a K turn, just an area for.
Sure, yeah. And in the, in the, in the fire code under appendix, I think it's D under the two eighteen code, there is dimensions on what we would look for on the turns. And we can give those to you.
Yeah, and and we would all do the driving templates for all of these turnarounds during preliminary plan.
Okay. But my main concern is is the fire protection for the lots. And once we get that first one or two apparatus in there, then once we lay that supply line in the street. Then we have, we have a difficult situation to get additional apparatus and manpower and equipment down to those homes. So if we have the chance to improve this area, now's the time to do it.
Thanks, Bob.
Okay.
Does anyone have any additional questions about Shali? Uh next review, we have the McMahon review. So transportation, traffic engineers are not with us tonight. They don't review sketch plans. Um so basically they are just in a review letter, they. Say that the, it would generate four new trips during weekday morning peak hour and approximately five total new trips during the weekday afternoon peak hour. And the site distance measurements should be shown and planned at the shared driveway for lots one, three, four, and five. As well as the driveway to lots two on Huntington Pike.
We could maybe just add something real quick as to why we didn't locate the driveway here. You know, not just being across from carriage lane, but if you are obviously familiar with Huntington Pike, there is, there is a slight distance issue at this location. And carriage lane and this driveway would be at the high points that you could actually see and have required slight distance in each direction. If we were to put the flag lots with a cul-de-sac over here. We wouldn't have the required site distance.
A more detailed review of this site will be conducted as the project moves forward through a detailed land development uh process. Additional comments are usually raised at that point in time. Next, we just have Mike McCray, our sewer engineer, which there is adequate capacity that exists. In this area would flow through the sewer horse sewer pumping station and then to shop that place where our treatment plant. And then our final uh review is the Montgomery County Planning Commission. Which advisory is advisory to the board of commissioners. Appreciate the comments. Uh which they commented lots three and four driveways, the shared driveway. Uh for lots three and four cross through an area of regulated steep slopes to mitigate the impact of the steep slopes. We recommend the applicant split the driveway so the access to lot four can completely avoid the steep slopes. It appears the proposed lot three building to be moved within the building envelope so that the driveway is longer. Thus minimizing the impact of the steep slopes crossing through grading. And they stress the need for tree preservation. We recommend that the applicant attempt to preserve as much of the existing woodlands as possible throughout the development process. Um stating it's critical to stabilize the slopes on site, site and are beneficial to water body and for species habitat. And then stormwater management, recommend a stormwater management plan. Uh I believe that concludes the review. This does.
Is that one? If the applicant chooses to go through zoning hearing board. And they're denied, do they have to come back with the cul-de-sac plan as a new sketch plan or is this old, well, there be some other plan? Well, the cul-de-sac plan or something with less lots and doesn't keep the cul-de-sac or like lots.
I I don't believe this is a sketch plan process mandatory. So we wouldn't have to come back with a sketch plan. I mean. The whole point of the sketch plan is to really solicit just input it like an early stage in the plan so that we can. You know, tweak the plan to hopefully get more compliant, more attractive to the board. Um so if if we didn't receive uh the variance relief, we would probably come back in with a preliminary plan.
Anyone before we open this up to the public? And I just have one question because to me it appears that I'm seeing five lots on this cul-de-sac plane. Am I correct? Okay, thank you. Um anyone else before? Open this up to public comment. First, anyone in the room, if you can please. Come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record if you'd like to. Address the board, address any more consultants or the applicant. Any questions at this time? Okay. We don't have anyone in the room that has any questions. Anyone on Zoom? EJ, they can raise their hand or.
Raise your hand or even just physically raise your hand.
You could physically raise your hand if you have any comments.
Hi, yes, so my husband and I live at uh one one five one country lane. Um so I believe this property would back right up to this development. Um we're really lucky to have a beautiful, but the um far end of our property, there is marshland and a tributary in DePennyback. And I was curious, I know we had talked about um, you know, some of the environmental impacts, but I was curious if that's been considered at all. Because there's that, there's a, you know, creek and stream system that runs through our backyard.
Yeah, yes is the answer. Yes, it has been considered for sure.
It has been and it will be further considered as the plan goes forward.
Okay. Okay, yeah, we're just curious about the impact to that.
Any other? On Zoom that has a question who was on it?
It's uh it's just for everyone to be given any other final. Comments or thoughts to the applicant at this time? I mean, I could start off that personally, I would like to see the property preserved as much as possible. If you consider. Omitting the two back flat lots, but it is your right to go and and then your right to go to the zoning hearing board and I respect that. But due to the natural features of this property. Those are my thoughts and based on our consultants reviews. I would like to see as much preserved and tree cover.
I'd like to take it a step forward. Maybe and say. Relax with the vine and I'd love it if you would. Perpetually be preserved where lots three and four are currently. Proposed and lot two to keep as much of the original woodlands as possible.
You just a a thought, I. Do you think there'd be any benefit for like a a meeting out at this site or something? Walk it, I mean, if you're interested, I mean, you can see what's there and. Yeah, I'm just curious if anyone would be interested in taking it. It's not a formal application other than a sketch plan, but I mean.
I don't know.
I mean. Or, you know, you, you know, break down a street. I mean.
Yeah, we all like.
Maybe as a way to do that, Larry, reach out to me. Um I can hold the board and we can suggest some dates if there is interest.
Well, I'm just curious, you know, the. Had any interest, maybe give some other thoughts and ideas and reconfiguring lots or something.
Larry, is it surveyed now or all the stakes are at, so you can physically see the tree lines and everything?
Uh well, we have some stakes out there. We don't have all the exact corners set. I mean, they're there, but.
I looked on my film briefly and it looks like all the wood, but it could be deceived. It's overhead looking down.
It's.
You can't see the tree base.
There's a lot of open area. They're they're larger trees, so they have big canopy. So it looks like everything's wooded. But I mean, there is a lot of woods on the property. Don't get me wrong. But it's the larger trees that you can sometimes work around. Just a thought, I just put it out there.
Well, it sounds, sounds like the message is there's too much.
I I I think.
On the property.
I think that we.
You know. Chris offered to set up a, you know, a tour and.
I think it might be beneficial.
I mean, you know, that that that's the plan with as many lots as possible and the least amount of improvements. That's the plan, right? So that's never been that plan. So there's probably some other plan. Probably some other plan out there that you can come up with.
Three, I'm into back two and as much. Natural features as well, trees, woodlands.
Uh I guess we'll reach out to you, Chris, then, on that and maybe in the next couple of weeks.
If I spring that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Got some direction.
Yes, we did. Thank, thank you for your comments. We appreciate your feedback and, you know, hopefully this will guide you to develop better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on my agenda is review and consider pickleball court sound mitigation expense. The township issued bonds in two thousand and seventeen to fund capital expenses related to upgrading our sports courts uh in. Two of our parks, Lower Moreland and Ridgeway Parks. Um and the project included replacing four tennis courts. Two in Lower Moreland Park with two pickleball courts uh which were uh completed in August two thousand and eighteen. And we actually uh completed a tennis court in Ridgway. Uh and as pickleball use increased. Uh we learned from neighbors immediately behind the pickleball courts in Lower Moreland Park that the sport has. In Lower Moreland Park that the sport has generated more noise than tennis and that we could have ever imagined. Um so in February two thousand and twenty one. Uh our board approved and updated some regulations for these courts. Uh they included some signage. Um thank you Steve Warner for that. Advised some times of play and some other goals and that's helped a lot. Um thank you to our board. And we also ordered uh some purchase of some acoustic fence and we didn't order a lot. It was just exactly behind. The one court, kind of like a small L and on the side of one court to try to diminish the noise. That the residents. Directly behind the court we're hearing. So those efforts. Yelled it a little sound mitigation, but not enough to make the improvement that everyone had hoped for. So. In speaking to our board and to manager Hoffman. Uh in January twenty twenty two, manager uh emailed a survey to. Residents who lived around the park uh to ask them how they felt about the pickleball courts. And whether they should be moved, um if the sound bothers them, there was a whole lot of questions and. Chris, did you know how many um, how many we sent out and how many it got back? The number, exact number?
Uh approximately fifty went out.
Okay.
Um and I broke them down by those within a certain uh like linear foot distance. Um then another category was those who specifically adjoined the park and then also some of. The uh immediate kind of across the street.
Right, right.
With that kind of access to the park.
Right, because you only sat down when.
Oh, that total, I think about thirty.
Okay, so thirty responded. Um and just to give everyone an update, my phone was exploding. And a lot of people were saying, please don't take the courts away. We love the courts. Um so out of all the people that did respond, about seventy four percent of the responding residents didn't wish the courts to be removed. And um it's frustrating because there's about six resident, six to eight residents that are immediately. Um impacted by the courts. So.
And not all of those six to eight wanted.
Not all of them wanted to be moved. No, we didn't get a survey and there's only a small handful. But we still do care about what every resident, you know, how everybody's resident feels. Um which I've been in contact with all of them if they're not, you know, and. Hearing, you know, their their feelings about the courts. So the township, right now, we do not have another place to move the courts to. In the township, so. Right now, what's in front of us is trying to further mitigate these courts in the current location that they are in. So we had asked Steve Werner to look into more of this called acoustic block fence, which is a sound barrier fencing to go around the courts. When we we talked about a time lock gate. In February two thousand and twenty one, but Steve had had some problems trying to get the. You know, vendors out due to the pandemic and whatnot, but Steve was actually able to. To, you know, have, you know, get some some vendors out and have some estimates for us to be able to. Uh have that for us tonight, uh an estimate for us tonight to install that. And also, uh he's recommending to plant some alberviety to create a visual buffer behind homes and the courts. It might even provide an additional sound barrier. Uh the back of the fence is black. It doesn't look that great. Um and the acoustic block is green, so. Behind the the park and behind your homes, it just doesn't look that very nice. So I think Chris had sent me the breakdown because Commissioner Housen had asked me the breakdown of these today, which was an excellent question. What our accountant here, hold on, I'm gonna pull this up as I sent this to Ruth. Or you know, okay, so the acoustic block fencing is. Approximately fifteen thousand dollars. The planting of trees is twelve thousand dollars and gate lock is five thousand five hundred dollars. And some incidental project cost is one thousand five hundred dollars. And uh Steve is proposing two rows of alberviates because Steve, and they're about six, seven feet. And it's about a hundred and seventy feet across the back. Are you gonna, are you gonna just put one row and then a little bit? Or you gonna stack? Stagger, that's okay. And. What type of alberviates are those? Steve, again, could you?
I just got plays with gray giants, the same thing we planted at the public works.
Okay, so they're gonna grow together and make like a wall.
Two to three feet.
Like a fence?
Yes.
So they're real dense?
That's the idea.
Okay, because Commissioner Housen had another question about the alberviates.
Because some are native and some are not, so we picked maybe the ones.
Correct.
Right, okay, there you go, here's the answer. And um so the 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 fence will will go all the way up the side of the pickleball. Uh which we only have a half, all the way along the back and then all the way up the other side, so it'll be like a U. And um you talked to the rec Steve, so that he said that this should.
Yeah, he he recommended to try to encapsulate to make a big U basically. One that winds created it from a long block.
Right.
The playground side would be closed off, the entire back and about thirty three feet on the.
Right. Well, I think this should help. And I think it should help. Um and I I did, I like I said, I've been in contact with. The handful of residents that say their quality of life has diminished and they they're not able to enjoy their backyards, which that's something we don't want to hear. Because of the popping sound of the balls and the rackets, but you and I have been out there. And we've we've heard the quiet rackets and the five balls and we can't even hear that. Sometimes the tennis is louder than the pickleball, so.
So they have a racket that diminishes the noise.
There's a.
There was actually a racket that's quieter.
So, yeah, there is, but it's extremely expensive. They're hundreds of dollars, so. Very, very expensive. So to impose something like that in a public park would be, it would be cost per.
And we don't have parks and rec staff that like there's no one available in the park to. Actually monitor the use of a specific kind. We make the recommendation of that people are decent.
There are a few hundred dollars. They start at like two, three hundred dollars on off. So. You know, someone that just wants to start to play pickleball wouldn't wouldn't be able to afford about one of those.
But we could strongly recommend that.
We could strongly recommend because when Steve and I were at the park, we could not even hear it, right, Steve?
Yeah, there was a group.
There was a group and it actually was from Chris Odeners. I met I met them for some, and they were from your ward. And they introduced themselves to me and Commissioner Housen, and we didn't even hear them. We said, wow, wonder, and I asked them and they. He said that the white ball.
I could for way less of over spending for. The actual maintenance and have them on hand.
Have them, you know, locked into the area.
Sign in, sign in from here.
Well, Steve also, when we were there the other days, there when there's aggressive tennis players, you can really hear the ball popping too. So during during the pandemic. I think my complaints, park complaints have increased a thousand fold. Because the park, I mean, I think it's amazing because people are utilizing our public parks. It's great, but you know. It's to people that want to come home after work or on a weekend and enjoy their backyard that live around the park. It's it's become a little. You know, so they can't enjoy their back. There are, there are. I mean, I mean, you can still hear though. So basically the homes are about two hundred and fifty feet. I mean, it doesn't solve a whole problem. It really doesn't.
Are there pickleball courts nearby and what do they do?
You still hear a pop, but the pop isn't as bad.
We don't have an example of courts that are located as close to private property. So there's courts staying here.
But there's no residential block.
Yeah.
Right, and you uh somewhere down in the shores in Ocean.
Ocean City has a.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you can hear them like. But I didn't know about the uh the rackets and the balls. I'm. I don't want to spend thirty five thousand dollars in taxpayer money. When people should be managing this and stuff. I have no problem with the time lock fence. I think we already approved that. Um in the past, or we certainly discussed it. You know, uh but I don't, I don't, you know, I I I just don't think that we should be spending taxpayer money. I think we should require people to. To do what they have to do to make it quieter. I know that sounds unreasonable. I don't know. What do you guys think?
I'm not for trying this. It's gonna preserve the neighborhood and make it quieter for the neighbors. I'm not forgiving a shot. Especially the alberviates, it's natural for many. It's gonna be a fun park. There's no issue with the additional fencing. And improve somebody's quality of life in adjacent homes. I'm not for trying this.
Are any of the residents here on the?
The 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 one resident that is most impacted, he couldn't be here. He's away. He's away at a business meeting. But um he also did request, I mean, he would like a sound mitigation test to. To um measure the decibels of the sound that's coming off of the courts. But he is, he actually sent me a message. Uh tonight, and I actually have been sent it to Chris, that he is all for mitigating this as much as possible to, you know, have his quality of life better. So.
Sent me mail to the whole board, what was it, Saturday morning, the playing of it and you didn't hear the pops and everything else on video?
Yes, yes, so he's he's all for the, he's all for mitigating this as best as possible.
And when we were there for uh the HVA, you had a plane when we first got there. I'm not sure if there's the. You definitely hear it. It's a high pitched pops.
It is. It's a high.
By house near railroad, you're gonna hear a train by house next to a park, you're gonna hear people playing.
I hear you, but the.
On two blocks, on two blocks over, like here. We did.
Enter the house.
The the township made a decision that altered the experience of people. Currently.
Wait, you can hear it for two blocks.
Two blocks over, it kind of knocked me out of bed and I I have all my windows open.
Do you think?
I've been in this.
Meditation things are gonna. Rent that one?
Here, I'm hoping once it's in the U.
Well, Steve, what's the acoustic block claim? Do they claim that the?
He says you're never gonna stop the whole thing.
But it's gonna be dead in a little bit.
Anything you do is could help.
I've been to the Ocean City.
New Jersey.
Did he give a percentage of what he thought in my block?
I don't know. He actually get a percentage is. Twenty years when a tree.
I mean, there's a whole.
Ocean City, New Jersey has acoustic fence around the whole. Structure and they have alberviates and it it helps a lot. I mean, I spoke to neighbors down there. It's a lot better. But I just, I don't, I don't, you know, I feel like we gave something and if we just shut these courts down, I don't, I might have people knocking down my house. In Abidale.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting we shut it down. We spent a lot of money.
Yeah.
And it costs a lot of money to move it too.
Um it's well over six figures to move it and we have nowhere to move it to. So this is. I would like to move word. It's a lot of money. I mean, it's not something, it's it the it's to accomplish this, it's. Um approximately up to an amount up to thirty five thousand. Now Steve can be savvy. If if he can get it for less, he will. He will work his magic, right, Steve?
Play the alberviates for the report. And try to just remove some lot first, don't plan anything.
Can you phase it out the the money? Do alberviates see what that does? Or do a fence, do one or the other?
Well, that's what we only did the bare minimum here.
At least means going forward and we increase the fence, but not do the alberviates. Would the neighbors complain about the look of the fence?
No, the neighbors aren't complaining about the look of the fence.
You can approve it, um money, but Steve can orchestrate incremental changes.
Sounds good.
Okay, change the amount then?
No.
No, okay, then I'll make a motion. Do we have any public comment on this? Does anyone have any questions regarding this?
Come on, buddy.
This has been very belaboring.
I'm gonna be kind. I will be kind.
Please be kind.
My name is Chuck with day twenty four seventy two Delver Dock. I'm gonna take, I'm gonna quote you. May Mister George complain about the noise from the construction site? That's ongoing, six, seven days a week now. What what did you tell us to do?
Call the police.
Why didn't you give the advice to Commissioner Kurtz that people making noise up there, have a call, have them call the police? You get a record of it, don't you, right?
I don't think that's the same kind of thing.
Sure it is.
Not really.
When they're they're working on this project, six days a week, ten hours a day. Okay, they don't play ten hours a day up there. I was up there today at two o'clock. Nobody won them courts. Had a gentleman up there at ten o'clock. Nobody won them courts. At five o'clock, there was another guy up there. There was two people playing pickleball on them courts. So it's not a constant. There's rules. There's noise ordinance, right? It opens at nine, it closes at dusk.
But it's more of the act of the play, which is a permitted use.
It's permitted use, correct.
And we we didn't anticipate this problem and we created the problem to existing homeowners.
But what's the closest property to the, did anybody do a survey?
A hundred feet.
So what's the closest property to the back of the building at hundred and fifty feet, correct? So to the backyard now.
Yeah, so I'd see the connection. You're trying to put the board into a position to explain why they're inclined to uh. Install mitigation measures on a property that's owned by the township impacting neighbors.
It's owned by the township.
Compared to a private property or.
It's private property, correct. It's the same thing though, it's noise. There's noise ordinance in the township of Lowmoreland, correct?
So.
That was, that was.
If the point you're making is clear, the difference of a township owned property with. That they permitted this time of play for any of the events that go on now. Um if it's, this instance, of course, if it's an eventual request from HVA to expand the use in the parks where they play. That is, from my perspective as the manager, something that we need to take a look at, to make recommendations for how public spaces are going to use. Your combination of that with the impact of a private property, then also, yes, to your point, they have to abide by noise ordinances and obligations under. Code as they improve private property are similar but different.
But they still have to.
In that way.
And that.
Construction will win in some.
Well, then well, there.
Noise will never end.
Or it ends, it does at dusk. But my my other concern was with taking all that land away. Now with it open back there, the noise that the people are hearing from the Wawa now. And that's a kind, that's twenty four seven, that's open twenty four seven, that was from the Wawa. I don't know how many times you heard car alarms go off in the middle of the night. Two, three in the morning where someone might have locked their car and then forgotten. Door, then they go off. Hear it? You hear them blowing the leaf blow over there, cleaning the islands of the where the gas is, okay? I mean, John, we do have to follow our news ordinance. We created these policies, correct?
And and when there's a noise problem, you should call the police.
Right, so after dusk, if they're still playing, the people should call the police, correct? And the police will come out, make a report and ask them to leave.
For the pickleball courts?
For the pickleball court.
They can call the police.
And they can't get in there till nine o'clock, correct?
Eight o'clock, eight o'clock.
So the last meeting Denise who asked for the fencing and you asked for a timed managed fence block, correct?
Yes.
So how much does that cost compared to the thirty five thousand dollars that you want to spend just to beautify that area up there?
We we didn't install the time lock.
We didn't?
That's what Denise described when she was detailing the memo. That did not go in despite having previously been offered. But so that cost. Is approximately about five thousand dollars. Oh, out of that thirty five.
Let's have public comment.
Yeah.
Not a cross examining.
Well, this is, well, no, it's not. It's public comment. I'm asking, I'm asking a question. Well, that is. My dad is.
Yeah, and you know what?
It's not public comment.
Yeah, they start, they haven't even started yet. The um the residents that come back from Florida, it's just starting to pick up. And in the summer, it's nonstop. And in the summer, it's non-stop. We have lines waiting for pickleball.
But it's, it's a well-controlled game, correct? If it's raining, there's no noise there.
They still play. In the fall, Chuck, we took the nets down and they even play even in the winter. If the nets are down, they bring their own portable nets. They love it. People love it. I think it's, it's wonderful, you know? They love it. No, it's a public, it's public.
Trying to find the right balance for a public facility.
People can play. I mean, they're open.
I, I just think it's a lot of money to spend for pickleball courts. That's one of the.
One thing for the. Public comment.
Thank you.
So one thing for the board reference, um, I haven't gotten a question about where the funding comes from. So obviously stewards of the public dollar, that's very important to what we do. Um, I don't make recommendations that would be advising the board to make an unwise or a investment that we are not capable of. You have a Parks and Recreation Capital Fund that sets aside more than a hundred thousand dollars each year to make improvements to the facilities in our parks. That's how we originally funded these. I mean, it's how we also make recommendations to be able to improve on public facilities that we have. But you have sufficient funding to be able to make these improvements if you so choose.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions? From the public?
I believe the majority of the room is interested in making that presentation about a fire.
That's what we'd like to know. I will make a motion. I'll make a motion to move forward with everything as we described tonight. For approximately thirty five thousand dollars out of the parks, Township Parks and Recreational Capital Fund, um, to mitigate the pickleball courts. For noise reduction measures.
And not to exceed.
Not to exceed. Thirty five thousand.
Just for clarity, we're going to do this in phases. The netting works, chill down there. Alberbides and mosses.
So this is just for funding. That was our suggestion as far as the sequence. Is anybody more second?
Sure.
Is the motion in second to approve the funding for this mitigation strategy? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Yay.
Let the. So that Commissioner. Name?
No. I just didn't know.
Bob Dela. Item on my agenda is the billing official report for March. There were seventy seven total permits issued for March, sixty residential, seventeen commercial. I'm going to go quick. We had a hundred and fourteen inspections by type. Uh, Bob is in the room. Does anyone have any questions for Bob? He had twenty three complaint violation and noticed to comply. Um, did anyone, does anyone have any questions? There were seven business, uh, UNOs and four construction UNOs and we thank Bob and Bob for all the hard work in this department. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Um, just final, uh, my liaison positions are the planning commission. Uh, EJ said there will not be a planning mission meeting this month. Uh, community events, uh, our next community event is our Earth Day event. So everyone's been working hard on that event and it will be held on Friday, April twenty second at Lower Moreland Park. It's on Facebook. We'll have a community tree planting, uh, goodie bag will be given out and a park cleanup. Please, uh, come. And I also personally invited, um, our, uh, tree plant, uh, tree tenders that, um, are registered, uh, that have took the classes. In our community in Lower Morelands. So just in case they had by any chance missed it on Facebook page. I wanted to be respectful to them. So they had gotten an invitation. Um, uh, the Acon, that will be on Joe's agenda, but I wanted to have special thanks to EJ and Leah who assisted in this event. And the, uh, the Huntington Valley Library. Another, uh, with regard to Earth Day, we, uh, EJ is planning a township shred. Event. For the fall and also, um, what EJ and I are working together on some environmental workshops and a rain barrel workshop. For later this spring. And that concludes my agenda for this evening. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Commissioner Kurtz. The chair on our case is Commissioner Canali, Chair of the Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, Dr. Sir. First, uh, item on my agenda is the presentation from Huntington Valley Fire Company regarding the new tower truck. Let's leave it all for you guys. Yeah. Alright, so as these guys get started, I guess I'll just generally introduce myself. So those that don't know me, I'm Mike Mulder, the president of the Valley Fire Company. Uh, administratively, as our first tenant operationally. So we do have, uh, some presentation here to discuss our current letter of charge. I just kind of wanted to provide a, a quick overview and then I will turn it over to the truck committee that has done the majority of the work. So just real quick by, uh, by way of introduction, uh, just to recognize some folks that we have with us, our Chair of the Truck Committee, Roger Rickles, obviously our past Chief of Safety Officer. We have our Assistant Chief Ken Middleman, a driver operator for a very long time, John Ransett, as well as our Assistant Chief Engineer, Bill Wilden, and our Sergeant Justin Smith, uh, right here. Uh, so while we're regrouping tonight, a couple of years ago, going all the way back to something like twenty nineteen, uh, we kind of started to discuss that Tower Eight was starting to approach. Uh, sort of that twenty year milestone. Uh, and in doing so, we kind of said, you know, at some point we're going to start talking about replacing the truck. And obviously, you know, we kind of hit, uh, a pretty big global event. Things started to slow down a little bit. And as we got towards the second half of twenty twenty, we kind of more formally started to get a committee together, start looking at what this might look like. And so we've been at this for over a year now, probably close to a year and a half, looking at different manufacturers, trying to make sure that we're recognizing the needs of the community. Uh, some things we've learned in the last twenty years of having the truck that we have now. Uh, and so we're, we're sort of here tonight to, uh, make that overall recognition. So this slide just basically covers off our overall current apparatus. Uh, you know, the tower is two thousand and one, so we're already at, uh, twenty one years. Generally, the NFPA nineteen eleven appendix D recommends that by twenty years, you start to put that piece into reserve and by twenty five years, it should be retired. Um, you know, just looking in general at our overall current apparatus, you know, there are, are, one of our pumper's, which is engine eight, is also seventeen years old. Uh, just for general awareness, but obviously tonight we're here to mostly talk about the tower. So with that, Ron, the floor is yours.
Okay. Try and keep it as brief as possible. Our background, just a quick background of our trucks and our fleet. Nineteen seventy four, which was back in the dinosaur ages, we started to get some mid-rise building construction in the township. Examples, Glory Day Towers, Fairway Plaza, which were what they called mid-rise buildings. Uh, their Fairway Plaza was four stories. Obviously Glory Day Manor is eight stories high. We had nothing obviously that would reach eight stories. So we purchased. A nineteen seventy four snorkel truck, which is a bucket truck, but does not have a ladder. It was a rear mount vehicle. It was our first ladder truck in the township. And again, it was mainly for Glory Day Towers and Fairway Plaza. That truck was with us for about twenty seven years. Again, two years over what the NFPA recommends, but in two thousand and one, we started looking at another ladder truck. And we ended up in two thousand and two, we purchased a KME, which was a ninety five foot ladder truck, which gave us ten more feet of reach. And it was a lot more versatile because it has a ladder going up main. The snorkel truck did not have a ladder up the main. If you wanted to change crews, if you wanted to do anything, you had to bring the bucket back down. But if you were flowing water, you had to shut everything down, bring the bucket down, make your transfer crew and transfer tools back up the area you went. So the ladder truck allowed you to climb up the ladder and change crews or come back down. So again, it was much more versatile. And it was also had a further reach than what the other one had. So with the act being said, several existing mid-rise buildings, we now have Carson Terrace, which is a four-story building. If you include the roof line, you're up almost five stories. No ground ladder is going to reach that high. So definitely you need a, a ladder truck at some time, more than one if that building gets going. New construction also, the Philmont, Cor- Philmont Avenue corridor has obviously taken a lot of changes. You already know that. I don't have to explain that. Right behind my house, obviously we've got another four-story construction going on, which again, you add the roof lines, which were high. It's almost five stories in the air. Access is also a problem with a lot of these buildings too. And with a bid mount truck, it's also, uh, more imperative where you park the vehicle, on how you set it up. So. That's another consideration. Mutual aid, which is in the lower corner, Lower Moreland. Obviously you've all lived here long enough to know we're on the lower eastern corner of the county, Philadelphia being our eastern border. We don't receive first out response from Philadelphia. Philadelphia doesn't normally leave Philadelphia. They have helped us on a number of occasions just because they got the call before we did. The resident didn't know they pulled Philadelphia instead of Huntington Valley. But that's, you know, we work together without a problem. It's not a problem working with them, just the way things are laid out. Our mutual aid basically comes from the north, the west, or the south. So aerial trucks in this area are somewhat limited. So it's another reason we want to continue, we're to keep going with these aerial trucks. Aerial trucks also are used for more than firefighting. They're also used for rescue. You can use them for below grade rescue. Example would be something in the prick down off of West Road Bridge. But they're also used for high angle rescue. Aerial apparatus is a current contributor also to the maintaining our ISO ratings, which we do have an excellent rating in this township. So we want to continue to maintain that. Our. Current. We have charted it out, or I should say the president took some time to chart it out from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty two. Basically, the ladder truck goes out fifty five to sixty five, sixty calls a year. Uh, we charted it out from eighteen, which was thirty eight calls. And so far this year, we had twenty two calls with the ladder and one, two working fires, one being the. The most recent was the house, uh, down by the post office in the borough, which was definitely a working fire for sure. So that's one call that was really put to its test. Our recommendation, we've spent, like the president said. Well over a year traveling all over, looking at trucks, driving them, working the buckets, working their controls, checking them out. And we checked out Rosenbauer for the first one in Minnesota, which was a T-Rex, which is a. Basically, a, a bucket truck and on, on a heavy crane type chassis. Uh, we had that up in the borough and tried it on a couple of buildings up there. It seemed that it worked fine, but the only problem was it did not have a ladder going up and down the boom. So that was a drawback for us. Plus that vehicle is worth over two million dollars now. So that was kind of pricey. We checked out their straight stick, which has, a straight stick has no platform on it, which we feel is not as safe to work off of as far as we're concerned. It's, it gets places, but it just, trying to work off a straight stick, only one person can be up there at a time. If you have a guy backing you up, you cannot pass. Once you get to the top, you're kind of stuck with one guy up there. We checked the Seagrids in Bristol, Pennsylvania, an aerial scope, which was a mid-mount truck also, um. But it was less versatile for sure and it lacked a full ladder again to come up and down with. It had a, an escape ladder built onto the side in case something went wrong. It was just basically for a firefighter to get down off. So it wasn't really a true bucket truck. And that is also well over two million dollars. We checked an E1 company truck in Dedford, New Jersey, which was a mid-mount tower ladder. Nice truck, but unfortunately it was about five feet lower than the one we already had. Which makes it a lot less maneuverable, especially in some of these tight neighborhoods down at Philmont Avenue, up off of Eaton Road. The streets are narrow and it's, it's tough to get a truck that big and maneuver around. That one is also well over two million. We checked out a Pierce straight stick truck that Abington has. Uh, again, no bucket on the end. It's tough working off a straight stick ladder. It really is. It's not easy and it's not. As safe as being in a bucket truck. We went all the way to North Jersey and I didn't realize how far North Jersey went because I'm not that familiar with Jersey, but we were almost along that. We went and checked out a truck up there at Toine, which is. It's not a single source manufacturer of fire trucks. They get a ladder from here, they get a body from here, they get a chassis from here and they basically build a fire truck. It's not a single source type vehicle. And the controls to me were not. I don't know how to say it, quality. Built as far as I'm concerned. They just weren't the same as the other ladder trucks we have checked out. So we kind of. Nixed that one. That being said, the committee had, like I said, met for over a year and talked it over. We, we discussed it. We looked at all these trucks. We worked them. What we're basically recommending is the Rosenbauer King Cobra. The reason, a couple of real good reasons we're recommending that particular truck. It's safer for truss roof and parapet roof type. Situations, which we do have a lot more of in our fire district. It's capable of assisting on water rescues. The truck can go twenty degrees or, excuse me, twenty feet below grade with an articulating boom. So we can pull up on Welsh Road Bridge and reach right over and pick somebody right out of the water from there. So it's very versatile in that regard. The one thing that caught my attention and John Ramsden, who also does a lot of driving course, will tell you, it has a wide open windshield completely across the vehicle. There is no center strip. I never realized how much a center strip was in the way until I drove that truck. It's a lot easier to see out of and around here with traffic the way it is. It really does help. It's a, a good, uh, feature for the truck. The aerial controls, I thought, and everybody that we ran it, thought they were much smoother, much easier, made enough, you know, ease your flight and did a much nicer job. This truck also comes with a clean air filtration system, which again is something new in the fire service. They keep, uh, getting on us about bringing smoke and stuff back into the buildings, into the vehicles after you've been in a fire. So either you walk home or you get clean air in the cab. There's no other way. Because the stuff is on your gear and you didn't get washed off when you're at the scene, but you still have carcinogenics. It's just a thing that comes with fire. That truck also maintains our ISO rating because it's also going to have a pump on it. Like the one we have now. So, so it's basically. There's pictures here. I don't know whether you can really see them that accurately up there. But an articulating boom. The last ten feet of the boom drops down. That's the easiest way to, to describe it is to see this picture. So if you're coming over a parapet roof, if this is the parapet roof, it comes up and it'll sit right down on the parapet roof where our stick is only going to be like this. And the bucket will be up here and you have to put a ladder down to the parapet roof. So safer operation and fall around. You can work right off the front of that truck where you can't with ours. That's a rear mount vehicle. So you can work directly over the cabin down in front where we can't. We can't swing over the cab. We looked at a Rosenbauer and they are the only ones that manufacture that type of vehicle. Again, twenty foot below grade reach and the ability to land safely on a parapet roof, which is a new function out functionality compared to what we have now. It's carrying four hundred gallons of water, again, an increase over the current ladder truck. Five hundred feet of five inch hose. It's also going to carry a hundred and sixty one feet of ground ladders, which again is more than what we carry now. With all these newer houses and buildings that we have around, ground ladders are also used quite a bit besides the boom itself. So the more ground ladders, the more capability we have. It's got a six man cap- tab capability. And it's got a two thousand fifty gallon per minute pump, which is an increase over the pump of the truck that we have now. So basically we're stepping up quite a bit with this one. The overall length is forty seven feet, two inches, which is just a hair shorter than the one we have now. A little more maneuverable in these streets. The overall width, overall width is not going to change. Most trucks are about the same at eight foot, three inches wide. The overall width, overall width is not going to change. Most trucks are about the same at eight foot, three inches wide. The overall height is twelve foot, eight and three quarter inches. So unfortunately, some modifications will be needed to make the building for your height clearance to get it into the building. Rosenbauer is one of the world's most largest single source fire truck manufacturing companies in the world. Not just the United States, in the world. They have eleven manufacturing locations worldwide. Two thousand vehicles a year they produce. Seven hundred in North America alone. So maintenance is also local with this particular company in Collegeville. And they have maintenance plans that you can get it on where they come into the firehouse. And do the smaller maintenance oil changes, that kind of stuff. They don't even have to drive it anywhere. It's just done right here next door. So that's another plus. The warranty on these trucks, this has one of the best warranties around. They have a lifetime transferable structural body warranty, which goes with the vehicle when you sell. It doesn't end when you get rid of the vehicle. When you sell it or trade it, body warranty goes with it. The paint is ten years, the engine is five years, a hundred thousand miles. Uh, transmission is five years. Front and rear axle is five years and the pump is also five years. So the warranty is pretty, pretty good with this truck. The bottom line, estimated delivery is about two years. Unfortunately, that's the way things are. There's no getting around it. It doesn't matter what truck you buy today, it will be two years before you see the truck. That's all there is to it. Uh, that's just a problem with parts and, you know, getting, you know, steel and all the rest of it. The quoted price is one million, six hundred and seventy-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars. And we just had a price increase at the end of last month. And it was a significant increase. This is just the way the world is today in this country and the world. It's Co-Stars available, financing available through Co-Stars, which is a help. They have discounts for, you know, payments as you go along or whatever. That's something, you know, the. The bean counters can work out. It's not a problem, but they do have, they're very flexible with, you know, payment plans and that kind of thing, so. That's basically what we're recommending for the fact that it is more versatile and maneuverable and again. To compare them. That's the difference between our stick, our tower ladder and theirs dropping down over the side. So that's one of the real main features with this vehicle. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Yes, ma'am.
What is ISO?
Insurance services. Office, I believe, is their title. It's a rating that they give the fire companies in the area. Your pumping ability, how much water you can pump and put on a fire, your aerial ground ladders and, you know, if you have a ladder truck, how many ladders you carry. It's, it's a whole gamut of things. It's your insurance money. How much is front of cost you to insure your house? So.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
How many drivers will you have certified to drive this truck?
Account.
Or will be going for training.
Right now, account.
Anticipate.
Sixty.
Great.
How many?
Sixty.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I saw a video on this truck and it was pretty phenomenal.
I'm not retired. I'm still driving and there's, uh, John drives quite a lot. He's a great experienced driver also. And chief engineer and a bunch of the guys, so. This is going to change just a hair for training because it is a rear mount. Now, it is not a mid-mount. That changes the whole. Complexity of how you turn into a turn, but it's just a matter of training. I mean, the snorkel truck was a rear mount years ago, so it's not a mystery at all.
Was it worked to the warranty?
Oh, we have, there's a whole, we have a whole packet here. Oh, he's got it already. It's in there. It's in the back, so yeah.
The building. You're going to need to change.
That's my.
That was my question as well. So the building, like to fit this thing in, what are you guys going to have to do to modify the station? What's the approximate cost on that?
You're a, this man is construction. I'm not. I was an automobile technician, so.
Well, thank you very much.
So you're quite welcome. Anything else, we get the answer.
I'm John Ramsden. You all know me, you know, I'm a general contractor. Most of you know I'm a general contractor. I've looked at this broad little modification with the current door contractor that we have, Apex. And then also I met with the Bustamante Structural Engineers and we've been over modifying. Uh, probably two beams that we have, two big, uh, mock, let it move in. And uh. Possibly paving the ramp to get the right angle. And it looks like an estimated cost should come under fifty thousand dollars.
Say that again, sorry.
The est- estimated cost of modifying the door.
So it's only the door that needs to be modified?
It's modified, it's lengthened, gets adjusted so that it opens further. And then there are two beams that actually get cut out. Beams go up on top and then the, the two top flanges of existing beam gets suspended from outside. And then they will possibly pave the. Ramp, because right now, you know, we approached Red Lion Road, it sort of goes down like this. We have to just adjust the paving a little bit. But that's in part of the engineers. Uh, cost. He's going to take a, I guess, a digital picture of the whole project and make sure everything will flow right in there.
And on purpose, the height differences, how much we need versus?
Uh, we have the, the outside beam. Is thirteen three. And the truck is.
Twelve eight.
Twelve eight change. And then the next beam up is the floor. Uh, the first beam is actually a fourteen inch beam, second beam is sixteen inch beam, so plus the floors going up. So we have to allow for that convergence there. So we came up with the idea of putting a beam outside. Through rods through, it's actually the least disturbance of everything. You've got seen, uh, you've seen air conditioners sitting on roofs and things like that. They put beams up there. Uh, you take two, two stub posts off of each column that are holding existing beams. And you can eat each one, you raise it up above the roof a little bit, all threads down into the top flange and existing beam. Pitch pockets where they go through the roof. And you can take the beam all but about two to three inches out, so plenty clear.
Do you guys actually have a formal quote yet from an engineers with drones to indicate if this is what it's going to be roughly?
We do not have an estimate from the engineer when he believes it'll be.
Gotcha.
And I have a breakdown of what I believe if I were to price it out as a contractor would be. Um, I have steel prices. But until we get the actual rolling from the guy, we're submitting to a, a steel manager or a steel fabricator, Fazio, one of those guys out of Philly. I don't have the exact numbers, but we have, I have several friends that are in the, in the commercial industry. So I know what the, the costs of the steel are. Rough idea what a crane is going to be, do a couple picks. Um, it's really. To me, it's not that big of a deal. It's on client projects that we speak for.
I don't run, I've got questions. This particular model. Does when you secure a level, the tires stay on the ground or they go off?
This one, you can leave the tires on the ground. They, they'll, they'll let you set it up either way. But we would still probably just lift it, not near as high as we do as with the one we have, but bring them up just so they're just touching the ground.
And just hypothetically, the board proved it today. It'll be delivered here two years from today. Um, what would the duration of training that we require to get it the first, you're ready for the first call? How much would time would you anticipate? Uh, as far as the, you know, understanding, the specs and the training that's involved, you know, roughly?
I would keep the old truck around. I would say at least six months. That way we give them plenty of time. Our guys normally train drivers from Sunday morning at eight o'clock in the morning, sometimes till noon time. But you can only do like three or four or five at a time to keep everybody moving along in and out of the cabin. We still have to do the aerial part, which was. Yes, it's the same, but it's a different truck and it's a different way of setting it up because it's a rear mount. Front now. So it's going to take some intense training, yes, but I think the guys are up for it. The only other thing I, I didn't mention before, and I don't want to hold you guys up too much longer, but. You have to look to the future. The future of this township, you know what the building future looks like. You know what the Philmont corridor is going to look like, or have some idea in your mind what it's going to look like. When this truck goes to be replaced, I'm going to be dead and gone. But I want to know that I'm laying out something that these guys can use if we go up into Mason's Mill Park. We don't have to put. Put a ground ladder down on the roof to get over the parapet. Because if the guy's got to get off in a hurry, if he knocks that ladder, i- it's over. This way, if that bucket's sitting right there, he can jump one, he's gone, he's off of there. So I'm thinking ahead the next twenty years, because you know it's going to be at least twenty years before the trucks replace. That's just something that, you know.
So you're saying the overlap six months, possibly the two vehicles. How many houses, what were the housing situation here of two vehicles and?
Well, we wouldn't. We would, the other one would probably be parked along the side of the building. Or, but the township yard, if possible, it'd happen. Yeah, but that was just something that popped into my mind.
But theoretically, that could be the one you're still using because everybody's not trained, so I guess it would be some thinking about that process too.
Probably be sitting out here, I would think.
Would you, in your opinion, this is a better rescue kind of ladder, the way, obviously, not just, not just to fight with apparatus, but just as a rescue?
Because of the articulating boom, yes. Yes.
Question for Fire Marshal Shaw. We're going to ISO reading this. Say we lost this ladder, what would that do to our ISO? I know we're surrounded right now by Southampton, East of Bill.
ISO, when we did the last study two years ago, when the state came in. With the ladder truck being in the township, the response was faster. So our rating would go up. Our ratings dropped two points the last ten years. So we would have a significant, it would definitely go at least one point or more.
This scenario is not bad and dropping is good.
Yeah, the lower the number, the better. If I'm not mistaken.
So.
My rate bottom.
No, I don't believe so.
The reason our ISO rating is so good.
The lower the better.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah. Because of the apparatus in township, because of our training, our records, Aqua, our building specs. We greatly improved our ISO.
So you believe if we didn't have the ladder, it would cost us a point or so or something? Despite the surrounding mutual aid.
Also.
Mutual aid vehicles only work half points.
Yeah.
In, into your response. We just talked about that when you were there last.
We're also gaining more pumping capacity. We're gaining more gallons per minute out of that, the new truck and the old. So that we're gaining, it'll help a little. It's not going to, you know, blow it out of the ballpark, but it does help a little.
Well, the new truck holds more water on the truck.
Yeah.
And did I see on the video that the actual, I'm calling it cap, that the actual bucket actually swivels to, did I see that?
No, no, it just, you know, it's the last five feet of the bucket. I can't do it with my own, it doesn't work that way. Instead of being just. Bucket being over like.
And it's your wrist.
Yeah.
Say if you're under a bridge or something like that.
You drop right down.
It's a really nice feature.
Yeah.
I've seen a rescue last summer down towards Wildwood with. A truck like this, there was a, a boat in accident in the water and they backed up to the seawall and they, it was a rear mount, they went. And over the water. And then articulated down and that's how they saved the people that were stuck in the, and they were way out. They were like eighty feet out in the water.
Yeah.
It was pretty cool. They had the lights on. It was late night. It was like eight o'clock at night and they had it all lit up with the lights at the end.
You know, see with a straight rig, you wouldn't do that. You wouldn't be able to, yeah, so.
Any other questions from the board?
Thank you.
Anything from the public? Anything online, EJ? Thank you guys very much.
Thank you very much. Yeah, that one's for you.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
So my next item on my agenda to save me is review and consider temporary roof closure of Inverness Lane. Manager, how, go ahead and take it. Actually, we'll give him thirty seconds just to.
Thank you. Thank you. Very well done.
Shall I?
Go for it.
All right, so. PennDOT is currently replacing the bridge on Washington Lane. So this caused a detour. And while there's the publicly stated detour where PennDOT has to reroute traffic onto other state roads. Several GPS systems are rerouting vehicles onto Inverness Lane. So noticing an increase in the number of vehicles that were getting to Inverness at Turwood and then trying to make that turn. Uh, that raised some significant concern for Sergeant John Stevens, who heads up our traffic safety unit. An area that is known locally as not having sufficient site distance. Um, and with the bridge construction and more cars going there, that raised Sergeant Stevens' concern. So we wanted to look at, is there something that we should do in the interim period? To either better monitor that or perhaps fully close off those turn movements. So that's ultimately what we are recommending, is that for the duration of the Washington Lane Bridge construction. That Inverness Lane uh, be closed at Turwood. So anybody accessing the properties that are um, off of Inverness uh, would have to do so from Welsh. And essentially the, the regulation could be to close Inverness between Deerpeff and Turwood. There's a single property owner between Deerpeff and Turwood, so we would still allow them to access their home from the Welsh roadside. Nobody would be making turns off of Turwood. So I did authorize that as a, just given the, the, the timing of when this meeting was coming up. So Steve had ordered the signs and they have been implemented, so traffic safety is now on top of. That has the ability to have everything out there in the field. Uh, but we wanted to recommend that the board establish this as a kind of formal temporary regulation. Uh, which our vehicles and traffic code allows in chapter one, one ninety-eight, paragraph five. The board has the authority to close a street during construction. And then that would allow the police department to enforce anybody that is trying to break that regulation. So what we're recommending tonight is just that the board formalize what essentially staff has already done, so that it can be regulated. Um, and that is specifically to close Inverness Lane between Deerpeff and Turwood roads for the duration of the Washington Lane Bridge replacement project. The last thought, thought of that is that Sergeant Stevens did have PennDOT come out. To actually measure the site distance from every direction at that Turwood and Inverness intersection. So this would be making a, if you're on Inverness, that turning left or right on the Turwood. Or if you are on Turwood and either direction can turn into Inverness. There's not a single turn movement that actually meets PennDOT's. Site distance requirements. So this may have opened up. That even after the Washington Lane Bridge reopens, we're not going to be able to allow terms there ever again. So we're going to, I guess, have some follow-up discussion, see what, I guess, we would recommend, see what PennDOT is willing to live with. Uh, because ultimately, once Washington Lane reopens. Uh, we may need to recommend that the board actually adopt an ordinance that changes the function of Inverness at the intersection of.
What are you thinking, like a one wire something?
So I think, so we, we want to be mindful that Inverness is one of our local roads and we get liquid fuels dollars for that. Between Deerpeff and Turwood, as I said, there's only one property order, but there is a actual. State regulated bridge there, so I don't know that say turning that into a private driveway is a fair expectation for a property over there. So I think potentially turning uh, Inverness into a dead end. So that it, it's public access remains from the Welsh road. Side. Um, and then being able to provide some sort of turnaround in the event that vehicles end up, up there. Um, but trying to figure out what is that best way to leave Inverness as a public road, so we don't lose out on liquid fuels. While also disallowing the term. So we'll, we'll have to get creative with traffic safety, work with public works. Probably get McMahon or traffic engineers involved, come up with that solution once we know what is the framework of operation.
Sounds good. Any questions from board? Anything from public? All right, looking for. All right, looking for a motion to close Inverness Lane between Deerpeff and Turwood Road for the duration of the Washington Lane Bridge replacement. So that is my motion.
Second.
Just a motion in second to close Inverness Lane as described, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, Terrence.
Chief Scarrato, you are up.
It's not that bad yet. Sitting in the back. It's your fault. All right.
Wow.
Good evening, everyone. Our monthly report from the police department, we had a number of ongoing crimes that we're investigating. We had a simple assault on Red Lion Road, harassment complaint, and a robbery into them that involved a weapon back on March twenty-sixth. We had a couple of property crimes related to burglaries. We had three thefts of catalytic converters, there was recently arrested Warren in Abington Township, that hopefully will be leads on our cases last weekend, so our detectives will follow up on those leads. We had a significant number of drug arrests, we had ten drug violations last month. So it's kind of an uptick in our drug violations that are off, many of these cases were self-initiated by our officers from vehicle stops and other interactions. We had seven DUI arrests last month. So officers were pretty busy with that type of crime. We had a multiple juvenile related crimes, one was the assault, the simple assault that I mentioned on Red Lion. There was also weapons offense at one of our schools involving a knife on school property. Those were handled by our juvenile detective and school resource officer. Again, ongoing frauds. We did have a male stop carrying a firearm without a license and drug possession also on Avenue nineteen. Again, frauds, all kinds of different frauds, phishing scams, attempted scam, cryptocurrency. So those were kind of the, the wider range of crimes over the last month affecting our community. And we did have several significant events. As many people are aware of the conflict going on in Ukraine, our police department was approached by the consul to Ukraine, it's in Lowermore Township, about providing some type of assistance or donation to that community. And we became aware of some other police agencies across Commonwealth doing vest collection donations to go to Ukraine to help the citizens and military over there. That was arranged with you, Military Attache of Ukraine to the United Nations. I sent out a email request to all the Chiefs Association members of Montgomery County. And over a week's time period, we collected, I put in my report, a hundred and fifty bulletproof vests, we actually had more than that, it was a hundred and seventy bulletproof vests that were able to send to Ukraine. And all that was arranged through Iberia Minnesota. So I was really happy to see the support. We have a Ukrainian officer, an immigrant from Ukraine. He spearheaded this whole project, he drove all over the county picking up vests for us. And he has family that's over there now in the war area. So we were really happy to be able to show this support to him and his family. Lowermore Police ran a second crime scene investigation school through the library. It was a huge success, tons of future crime fighters working on forensic science, collecting evidence, analyzing results. So we were really happy with the turnout for that. Another thing that we were able to do after establishing our K nine unit, we have two K nine vehicles, we have a spare that was a used vehicle that the board helped us purchase two years ago. And then we had a new vehicle that we purchased last year on a grant. So with the new vehicle in service, we loaned out our spare to the technical school over in Upper Morning, which is where our students get sent to. For a crime and police course, they offer a technical over off of Turwood Road. And this Eastern Center of Arts and Technology. So the students over there have been using our vehicle for over a month practicing law enforcement, so we're glad to help with that. And sixteen hundred calls for service, nineteen fire calls, twenty, eighty-one medical assistance calls and vehicle accident reports. So that's the report for last month. If anyone has any questions.
Any questions from the board?
Has the turtle ever been?
As of right now, the turtle has not been down. So there has been talk of a reward, so. Keep your eye on that crime watch for that.
I saw in Steve Warner's report that there was a car fixed, one police car fixed, but they used number, what'd you say, eighty-seven-nine? And I couldn't find that number in your. So was there an accident with a police vehicle?
There are a number of damages to vehicles over the last year, I guess, on different instances, I'm often aware of the vehicle that was.
What was it?
It just says eighty-seven ninety-nine.
Eighty-seven, I heard.
Yeah, I have the researcher for you, let you know.
Yeah, I just was wondering, this, all your numbers are in the twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, the number that we use. Those may not be the same.
We use big numbers.
Okay, okay.
And we use, we have service numbers, ours are twenty-five, sixty, sixty-one. And we renumber them depending on how they're utilized, not the police numbers, so, but we can figure out which that one's.
Any questions from the public? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. Fire Marshal Shaw.
Good evening. So for the month of March, daytime crew and myself, we've been going down to Arbor Square and we're looking at the new construction. We're looking at how the building is built from the, from the concrete footing up to right now of the fourth floor of the roof. And we invited Grenath personnel for the daytime. And we'll be doing some future inspections and visits down there as, as construction goes along, the weather gets better. We had a, I took the daytime crew down to twenty-three eighty-one, Filmont Avenue. We did a Knox box check and it was, they were due for their fire alarm test. So we assisted the fire alarm technician at checking the businesses. And he was a little upset because he doesn't, he can't charge for the amount of time he was there, because we were helping him out, but we got our guys out and to get to know the building and it's, there's major changes down, there's a lot of new businesses going in there. And you'll see some more UNOs eventually down in twenty-three eighty-one. We had a house fire at twenty-three fifty Watson's Lane and ended up being just a light smoke condition, it's a heater. And we went back the following day because the resident wanted us to check all her smoke detectors, enter C O detectives, which we did. March twenty-third, we assisted the police with a home check. We backed up the officers due to some conditions in the home, and unfortunately, the, the resident was found deceased in the home. We did assist Grenath and once another police officer with that. On emergency management, a real good topic came up with Upper Dublin during their storm, Tim Shuck, the emergency manager, gave a presentation on what they dealt with with hurricane, with the tropical storm. Not, some of the areas that they have, it's interesting to listen to them for a half hour presentation. Some of the township residents had no idea what went on the other part of the township. So they called the following day and wanted to know why the township wasn't open, why their trash didn't get picked up, because they had no idea the damage on the other township. And the amount of clothing and food that was donated to the firehouse, they had nowhere to put it. So that was a couple, just a couple minor things that we don't think of that were really, that hindered them. When the governor came, all bets were off, work stopped, insecurity had to be increased, and it was just, there were some interesting things that they had to go through. COVID, I've checked all our, checked all our healthcare facilities and requirements. Again, they're just watching the CDC and being cautious and careful. Same with the county, they sent out some, some different. What am I gonna say here? Memos to us and keeping us up to date on that stuff. UNOs, we found five, there'll be at least five UNOs coming out of the old Pennsyl factory, twenty-three thirty-seven Filmont. There, we, Joe and I have quite a few, and just to get an idea of what Bob and I are basically, Bob goes through with property maintenance. We've got a house at one oh six Somerset Road that hasn't been maintained in a while. So it's coming to the spring season, so Bobby asked me to call, and I called the company out in, I guess it was Illinois who first had it. They no longer had it, they sent me to a company in Houston, Texas, so I called Houston, Texas. They don't have it anymore, it was transferred to a company in Florida. And after about an hour on the phone with Florida, we figured out who's gonna, who maintains the property. They're gonna maintain a contractor in Pennsylvania, we were supposed to be very soon to talk about rest coding, property maintenance and so forth, so it just, we're getting to that season now, that's just part of the situations that we're running into due to the economy as well. And the fire company, you sold the fire company during the month, thirty-three fires, one fire police call, but the fire police do also respond to fire calls and assist us. Training hours of eighteen point five hours, administration was twelve, maintenance repair was fifteen. The only thing that we did not have on here was a total man out of the fire department, which was quite significant in March, so.
How is the response rate with your?
Daytime, the.
Yeah.
Just like the crew, we're doing, we're doing, we're doing well, we're still getting a driver also in two. Last week and the week before, we were getting two trucks out, so we're doing well, yeah, and then.
Michael actually sent the report for, I guess, the month of March, just before our meeting, and they were at eighty-four percent coverage for the month of March.
Wow, that's great.
So.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? From the public? No, thank you, Fire Marshal Shaw, thank you. All right, that brings me to my liaison reports. First up is H V A A, they had the opening ceremony, I saw Commissioner Kurtz, she was there throwing out the first pitch, nice job, nice.
Nice.
Commissioner Pierce was also in attendance, great American flag hanging over the parade, looked awesome. And the fire company was there for, for turnout, there was four hundred plus people. To bet the fields were saturated, so they didn't get to play that day, but hey, it was still a nice, beautiful opening day, and the sun came out just in time for the parade. Other liaison is the library. There was damage with the last heavy rainstorm we had, Christian will touch on that for a second.
Yeah, so that is an old building that has windows that we would never install in a building today. So Steve has been using contractors and his own staff to try to get ahead of rain leaks forever. So, and yet in this last storm last Thursday, they had some pretty significant damage at many, all of the bigger windows around the main floor. So we have filed an insurance claim to help with the initial cleanup. And then we'll be following up to see about what sort of, instead of carpeting underneath the windows, that's there's some more durable flooring that we can pursue, just kind of the aftermath of the insurance.
Great, thank you for that update. From Pam, the team advisory board has created another area trail, which will be in Lowermore Park, going up April twenty-fifth and staying up for one week. You can move from page to page as you walk through the trail. Also, a big thank you to Assistant Emergency Management Coordinator Worthington for continuing CSI Club of Teens program, real big hit. Rich will also be providing a severe summer storm informational event on May twenty-fourth at seven PM, library. Program is free and open to all. One other program coming up is April nineteenth at seven PM, there will be a Zoom that the library will be hosting, it's an informational lecture on understanding anxiety and depression. You can visit the website and check it out for more information. But he has any questions on any of my liaison reports? No, thank you very much, I'm gonna turn back to you, Dr. Sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Canelli, the chair and operator of business is Joe Pace, Commissioner Joe Pace, Chair of the Public Works Committee. Thank you. Review and consider twenty twenty-two paving bids. Is where received from three different companies, the base bid person is as follows, James Marcy was low bid, three hundred eighty-six thousand, six hundred twenty-six dollars. The base bid includes the following roads, Short Lane, Summers Drive, Dempsey Lane, Willbrook Road, Abidale Drive, Roy Drive, Huntington Point to Abidale Drive, Midvale Lane, Bob White Lane, Creek Road, Byberry to Dead End, and End Cross Road. The attached, the tabulation includes a person receiving several alternates. Based on our available funds, one alternate, alternate can be awarded, which would be Red Barn Lane, thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred fifty-nine dollar.
I can punch different fire calls.
Yeah, it's very cool. Are there any questions from the board for the paving contracts?
The bids were the, were you expecting them or?
They were higher than I expected.
But they're. Percentage wise?
It was ten dollars a ton more than I kind of expected.
Could we say expected, but Steve estimated at the time based off of, and even historical high price. This is not a failure on Steve's part whatsoever, and it all came in within the budget that we have.
When I'm doing my budget, I take last years, I take the high level, get the average, and then that's where I'll base the budget on, so we'll stay on here.
Any other questions from the board? Questions from the public?
Commissioner, we would just recommend also pointing out the other alternate for Grenath and Barrow.
The alternate for Grenath and Barrow. Grenath and Barrow buys, they would like to proceed with their full alternate in the amount of one hundred fifty thousand, four hundred eighty-three dollars.
So when that's included in that total contract price, they'll reimburse us that full.
At the end, right?
Yep.
That's a good one. So that being said, I'd like to make a motion toward the twenty twenty-two pavement contract to James D. Marcy in the amount of five hundred seventy-seven thousand, sixty-nine dollars, sixty-five cents for the base bid, alternative to Red Barn Lane, and alternative five Grenath and Barrow.
It has been motion in second to approve the bidding as described, all those favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The I S A, I would think.
He is review and consider historical architectural review board appointments. Back in February, advised that members Vince Rivera, Bob Chaddick, where sets expire in April. Vince is interested in being reappointed, and Bob's job title includes a role of that.
I can still say interest though.
I asked Vince, and he said he would do both.
You don't have hiring authority, Bob, I'm sorry.
Who was he asking?
Any questions from the board for the roles?
Yeah. Public?
So I'd like to make a motion to approve resolutions number twenty-two dash twenty-three and number twenty-two dash twenty-four, reappointing Louis Vicente Rivera and Robert Chaddick to a four-year terms on the Historical Architectural Review Board commencing April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, and ending April eighteen, twenty twenty-six.
It has been motion in second to approve resolution number twenty-two dash twenty-three and number twenty-two dash twenty-four as described, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, that's up, thank you.
Q is review and consider certificates of appropriateness. Hardmet, April fourth, the review application number twenty-two dash zero four. The application is for building at twenty-three seventy-three Huntington Point. Applicants propose improvements included in a covered porch, new doors and windows, new roof line as part of a project to change the use from an insurance office to a salon. The hard recommends the issuance of certificate of appropriateness. So, any questions from the board?
It looks really nuts. Looks really nuts, we just, we do have a lot of salons on the way, we don't have controlling.
Any questions from the public?
I don't know, I'm glad I'm in here.
I know, I know.
I'd like to make a motion, issue this certificate of appropriateness as described.
Sir.
Did the motion in second?
Sir, did the motion and second to issue the certificate of appropriateness as so described. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
R is Public Works. Steve's been pretty busy.
Oh, yeah, always busy. So spoken from all. I'll mention a couple things. The Pennyback Trail, quarrelling on Terre One Road. They finished the upgrades down there now. So now it's infrared. So I still encourage everyone to push the button. But it will pick you up now as soon as you walk into a zone. So, yeah.
Is that the, excuse me, is that the future for all of them now at this point?
Most likely, yeah.
Even change what's already in place or?
That one was push buttons there and just, you know.
Something even library or things like that?
Yeah, I would say that as they get upgraded, that would probably be that.
I would recommend the library.
I went through it when it was a bike and a walker. And the Hoover headlights was flashing. I didn't, wasn't sure what was going on there. So I saw the bike coming.
A lot of lights, yeah. Well, it picks them up about ten feet before they get there now, especially the bikers. That, quite frankly, the bikers were the worst. They wouldn't stop. You're supposed to get off your bike and walk across the street, but they don't usually stop.
They might hit the, but there was a biker coming this way. There was a couple coming this way.
And then the duration of of the light stays on longer as well. So a lot of times you'll approach and somebody's already thirty, forty feet past the crossing, and you're looking around. That was measured. We'll recommend alternative options for entering the town for you.
It's a spring, so we're, we're up and running in our street sweeper program, so we'll hit every wood at least twice. Like, he's out every day now. Usually take that one day a month to go through the service machine, like that machine on any day. Curbside collection started back up for yard waste on the sixth. So that's a big thing. And got a lot of calls this year again about starting it earlier. And I, you know, it's a, it's a tough balance. It started in March. I mean, you want to truck it there and there's to go to twelve stops. So it's something that the bounce out of year to year. And we've always worked with the public that if there was a bad storm or something and we needed an extra pickup, that there will. So like in the future, maybe we want to bump it up a bit more. HVACA, obviously, we got all the baseball fields ready and then it poured rain. But we got all the fields are ready this year and it looks like they have a pretty good program going. So we'll keep the fields maintained every Friday is what we try to do. We'll try to cut them, drag them and work with them, dry aging, chalk, whatever they, so. Soccer, obviously, goes year round, so. And the sewers, we met with Lower South Hampton with, to go over more flow meter that's in County Line Road. There's a, we have an agreement with Lower South and the exceedances that are coming in there for exceed what is supposed to go in there, but Chris has mentioned this before. So we're continuing to work with Lower South on that.
Are there penalties built in? Dollar penalties?
We don't, there was no penalty.
So today, the answer is no, because the agreement dates back to nineteen seventy-two. During that meeting, we brought up that it may be necessary to address a new way of building and having accommodated for the fact that they may continue to go. All of that said, the thing that, the way that we currently feel compared to what the impact is to what we pay Philadelphia, the, obviously, this is a meeting streaming out over Zoom. We are not losing money as a result of this overage, and it would require far more daily sewer flows than what is happening today, even at the rate that they're exceeding to have any negative cost impact to us. So, yes, we do need to address a better way for this, the agreement to update from nineteen seventy-two. But we're not going to do that and accomplish better financial conditions than actually exist today. So just setting an expectation for how that will play out.
Yeah, I was just asking, or is overall umbrella type of protection?
Certainly. And that's, we, the, the main thing is that we would never want to provide capacity in our system to another community and then lose out either on our own capacity that we needed or pay something on their behalf. So those are the terms that we always need to keep providing. And as, kind of backwards as it sounds, it's technically doing that today, but we should be more clear about how that's working.
Thanks, Steve. Thank you to you and the entire Public Works Department for everything you do, getting the fields ready, ready for all the events, the econ. It just seems like every single weekend, it's something helping work with the.
Econ was a huge success.
It had on HVACA, dropping barriers, you know, working with the high school for the community service project. I didn't even mention that. That was great with the assistant vice principal. They really enjoyed that.
No, one other thing, I am still looking for somewhere else. Eighteen years old.
Okay.
Great work outside, five days a week. Drink all weekend to spawn.
Be requesting a leave of absence as manager.
Your college job.
I don't have my liaison report, which would be the Harb, and I already talked about a motion that we made for the salon addition. So, so I have sent back to you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pace. The chair recognizes Commissioner Oner, Chair of the Coordinance Committee.
Thank you. It was getting late. I have a lot to get through, so I'll try to get quick. First is a residential regulated grading permit de resolution for pools. The township's regulatory obligations for grading permits has gotten increasingly burdensome in recent years. We adjust our application fee and desk requirements to be more in line with actual costs incurred, so we do not have to build residence as regularly beyond the SPRO toes. One area that was not sufficiently addressed is grade permits for pools, one of the more frequent permit types in our form. Currently, fee structure considers SPRO requirements based on a project's square footage. Pool projects often disturb less than one thousand square feet. They're horrible and requiring a two hundred fifty dollar escrow. These projects require several reviews, inspections, and the preparation of a stormwater operations and maintenance agreement, which incur fees greater than the two hundred fifty dollar escrow. Staff is recommending that a specific pool permit category be added to the grading permit fee resolution. Projects serving less than four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine square feet will require a fifty dollar application fee and one thousand dollar escrow, while projects to serve in more than five thousand square feet will require a one hundred dollar application and five thousand dollar escrow. These totals are consistent with the regulated grading permit fees. Any questions from the board?
No.
Any questions from the public? Now, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-two dash two-five, establishing the pool permit application fee and SPRO as described.
Sir. It has been motion and second to approve resolution number twenty-two dash twenty-five as described. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Okay, my next item is quality of life code inspector. The townships two thousand seventeen through two thousand twenty budgets included a ten thousand dollar allocation for part-time assistance to our code enforcement department. During that time, we employed Bill Lawrence, former Public Works Director, to assist with various code enforcement tasks. This allowed more serious items to be reported to Bob Shattuck for enforcement, while also lending the opportunity to address minor code issues as a friendly interaction. Sadly, Will passed away in twenty twenty and the position has remained unfilled. The twenty twenty-one budget remitted the funding allocation. Several commissioners recently expressed interest in reprioritizing this role. Mr. Hoffman, I'm sorry, Manager Hoffman met with Bob Shattuck and Jill Mateus to see if they thought that this would be helpful, and they both agreed that it would. The general plan would be to have someone meander the township for ten hours per week, noting various issues, including property maintenance, signs, sidewalks, stored vehicles, and other quality of life items. Simple issues can be addressed with a conversation in the field, while more serious matters refer to Bob and Jill for formal enforcement. Since the twenty twenty-two budget does not include this funding authorization, I ask the board to approve a ten thousand dollar line item budget by motion, so we could fill, seek to fill this position. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public?
I'd like to apply for that job.
So get your resume.
You have it.
For other purposes. I need a cover letter.
Can I sit on the interview?
Me, Chris, could a little prickly find.
Exactly. Well, with that, I propose a motion to approve a ten thousand dollar annual budget for a part-time code inspector.
Second. It has been motion and second to approve a ten thousand dollar annual budget for a part-time code inspector. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Okay, next is traffic related ordinances. Has been the staff's procedure to bring any traffic related ordinance recommendations to the board for review in April and October each year. We have not had many recommendations recently, so it has been some time since the review was done. Lieutenant Smith forwarded a report to Traffic Safety Officer Chris Daniel, who has studied parking regulations near Pine Road School based on consistent issues during drop-off and dismissal times. Officer Daniels recommending that parking be prohibited on the north side of Andrew Road between Pine Road and Lake Road. If agreeable, the board staff can advertise an ordinance, which the board may consider for the May twenty twenty-two meeting. Questions from the board?
Why do they want to do this?
Traffic's a nightmare in the mornings up there. Both sides of the street getting impacted with cars parked on both sides. The buses can't get down the middle. Because everybody walking. So if you wanted to do one side, it would allow for better of traffic.
Okay, thanks.
Got that.
With that, I make motion to advertise, I'm sorry, questions to the public? I make a motion to advertise and ordinance prohibiting, prohibiting parking at all times on the north side of Andrew Road, between Pine Road and Lake Road.
It is the motion and second to advertise ordinance prohibiting parking at all times on the north side of Andrew Road between Pine Road and Lake Road as described. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
And my next item is zoning hearing board rules. The March zoning hearing board agenda included a discussion of updating their rules. On April sixth, Manager Hoffman received the attached letter from the zoning hearing board solicitor Joe Bagley requesting the board commissioners' consent on the proposed changes. The three changes are summarized in the cover letter with a specific language following the comprehensive document. If the proposed changes are agreeable to the board, the motion to be made in support of the changes.
Commission, is there a way for the manager to summarize the highlights?
Sure. So rule change proposed. Proposed rule change number one just establishes the proper application procedure, requiring electronic copies, number of plans and exhibits, things of that nature. Item number two. Is that any, I guess, application which requires some sort of site or geographic plan needs to be prepared by an engineer or surveyor. They've seen more plans being prepared by architects. And they're not focusing on the, I guess, types of site criteria specific to lot coverage issues that are often what they see in a way that is adequate to them. So they want to specify who should be preparing these plans. And then staying on that complicated topic of pools. There's several applications that come in that are variance requests to exceed the lot coverage ratio for installation of pool. That often comes with, I guess, needing to look at stormwater management requirements related to that request. So this would, this will require that any application of that nature, the applicant would need to bring an engineer or pool consultant with them to the hearing to adequately address those questions.
And if our board makes a motion to agree with their recommendations, will they need to still vote upon it upon their board? Make it official? And when would it be, time wise, when would it be executed?
So yeah, my understanding is, so previously, when the zoning hearing board has amended their rules, I think many years ago, they would just do it. So I think this is a sign of respect back to the board of commissioners to, to request consent. So they, I guess they could do that.
The next year.
At the next meeting.
And then it would be effective immediately almost, or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
So I just have one question on this third paragraph where it talks about zoning officer having discretion when small residential projects are submitted, such as shed or fence. Bob's great with that. We know that he's been doing it for years. How do we memorialize that a little bit better to keep it cleaner on small projects where you wouldn't have that expense to go out and get an engineer if you're looking for that? A shed or something of that nature, smaller than like a ten by twelve or something of that nature, because it's just adding unnecessary cost to resident, might be.
Yeah, for a small accessory building, I mean.
Yeah, or fence or something.
You're talking about variances of that, right?
No, you don't.
You might, you might depending on where it's being located.
But for zoning purposes, you're talking about variances.
But they don't need to do engineering or, or stormwater management for those types of variances.
You're not eliminating the relief, you're just reducing the criteria.
The burden to get to that point.
Right. And we all know Bob's great with that, but whoever's following Bob up, they're either have something set in stone, or we don't have that at cost for an engineer or something that takes a thousand dollar shed and now makes it twenty-five hundred dollar shed, because you gotta go get plans and everything else.
The only way to do that, Joe, is to put some kind of a slight scale or put some kind of definition in there, shed of what, ten by fifteen or less?
Sixteen.
But the engineer is only going to be needed if, if, you know, if they're disturbing the ground, right?
Really, yeah. I mean, it's really dealing with dimensionals, setback distances and things of that nature, where you need an engineer that can determine those distances. Where in many cases, architects just don't, they don't work with the same scheme, for, I'm giving that as an example. That, that would be, you know, an opportunity for me to be able to say, well, I don't believe an engineer is necessary, but still, they still have to prepare a plan.
I mean, the second change here is to require a site topic graphic plan prepared by an engineer or surveyor. So that type of a site plan is only going to be necessary when a large house is being built.
Oh, yeah.
Or.
Topography proven has been a certain matter. Subdivision, something.
The pool, right. So architects aren't paying too much attention to the setbacks. You know, the site, they're looking at the house and making it pretty.
That's what we hope they're doing.
Yeah, but Bob, but one time we had a lot of those larger, larger, remember those larger, larger sheds that were going in, almost like pole barns? So.
Yeah, what would, what, I mean, that, that might require some kind of, some engineering.
Yeah.
Actually gives the ability to, if it seems like it's one that's going to hit that threshold, then they would need to be, need to meet the obligation of, of that rule. Joe, I think to, to your point of trying to establish a more objective standard for when Bob or a hypothetical successor, what would sound appropriate, like twelve years from now? Is, is, is in that role. If, if it isn't specific enough, are we, are we putting an obligation onto a resident that seems unfair?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
I, I think the, the challenge for trying to define that, or there are so many different examples of improvements on lots and certain criteria for them that making it more specific may miss something and actually do the reverse of the thing.
Any other, I mean, the other part of that is if somebody is told by Bob or Bob's successor that they need to get an engineer for some minor, and they call you, that can be way. I mean, that, that can be weighed by the board. Typically, that kind of an application, I don't know that it's happened that often.
No.
Here, I've seen it in other municipalities where it sort of goes overboard in terms of what you're looking for. So I, I sort of like the flex. You know, unless, unless you have somebody who's one of these.
Well, that's what I'm worried about. I know Bob's great with that, but God forbid, whenever you're not here, ten, fifteen, twenty-five years. You never know. Whoever that's got a good age.
I'm not gonna be able to remember.
I hear it.
So that's what I'm.
Yeah, I think that's a question for us at the point that we are interviewing Bob.
Start making your mind.
All day doing it. Definitely keep that in mind.
He has four years left on his hard term. He has to at least finish that.
Just to clarify, so when you're talking about a non zoning board issue, no variance needed, and you just normally give the applicant advice, you know, whether, you know, it's okay or not, right?
Yeah, we all do that.
This is just, this is a different board now having a formal process and they're just asking for certain things.
Right. Right.
There's those same applications that are coming in and nobody's there with the applicant to answer the questions, I think. There's an engineer.
Yeah, I'm good with all that. It's just the initial part when it comes to, so I guess by right, if you're not going front of the zone hearing board, this would not be required then, right?
Right.
Gotcha. All right, I'm good with that.
Make a motion. All right, make a make a motion to support the three changes proposed by Sister Joe Bagley.
Sir. Is it a motion and second to support the changes proposed by Joe Bagley of the zoning hearing board? And the board is supportive of these changes. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Next is zoning hearing board agenda and decisions. The April zoning hearing board agenda is following patients. And I discussion of amendments to the zoning hearing board rules. Application twenty two dash oh three of Amanda Dukasios of eight two three Black Angus Lane seeking a variance to allow the reduction of the front and side yard setbacks to permit construction of a single story garage with in law suite and covered rear patio. And application number twenty two dash oh six Karen Bond of thirteen twenty Welsh Road seeks a variance allowing privacy fence along the properties Welsh Road and Washington Lane frontages. The proposed fence would exceed the permitted height and not meet the fifty percent open requirement. Decisions made at the March meeting included application number twenty two dash oh four. The application of the Leon Oates Sullivan Trust at thirty four seventy one Hoagland Lane granted to permit a reduction of the ten foot to seven and a half feet to allow the construction of in ground swimming pool.
But that should have said that within.
Thank you. Application number twenty two dash oh five, the application of Troy and Susan Crustinger or Cruzinger at sixty Radburn Road was granted to allow an increase in the maximum lot coverage from twenty five percent to thirty two point five percent to permit construction of an in ground swimming pool with masonry decking and coping and accessory equipment in the side yard. And finally, my liaison positions are zoning hearing board, which was discussed, and Pay Pack Equal Restoration Trust, which was described in the development as far as naming her as our logical advisor earlier in the meeting. Well, I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Oner. The Chair recognizes Commissioner Housen, Chair of Public Properties Committee.
I had a a long list of items to discuss and they are all for us now because they have all been discussed in other places. So my needs would be really quick. We're going, the only thing that we didn't discuss is that we're looking in the future through the LMTA to assess stormwater but not increase the current sewer bill. Because there he's already described this because I have something else. Because their loads are about to end their bonds, excuse me. They're going to no longer, you know, need those buddies. So that money will be put towards stormwater projects and pollution control, pollution reduction plans. There are actually, I believe, about ten projects already proposed so far that might be using these funds for and money has already given for the site. And we'll be moving forward with that as soon as we can. The other thing that happened is we have during five events exceeded the wastewater allowance to the city of Philadelphia. And we had to pay a B of nineteen thousand six hundred and sixty dollars. But that is significantly lower than we have assessed ourselves. We had budgeted seventy five thousand dollars per year. We have never had to pay that.
And a good update, since our meeting last Wednesday, Mike McCree, our sewer engineer, did receive metering data for those peak flow events from Philadelphia. We have not had an exceedance since. That timeframe did not include last Thursday. So we'll see.
Okay. Well, they're going through a project where they're looking for where the
Are exactly. We will be TV and potentially smoke testing along the film. So the sewer main line that goes down film on and cuts through the whole property.
That completes my.
Thank you, Commissioner Housen. That completes all the agenda items. Is there any public participation for non agenda items? Sir.
Hopefully I can talk about some of the agenda that happened tonight. In regards to the
Sorry, in regard to what?
In regards to the sound abatement issue. I'm surprised if everybody just accepted that that figure. To me, it sounds like a lot of money to go after something that's got no guarantee. What are you going to do if it doesn't work? Are you going to throw more dollars at it? These sound abatement laws require maintenance. They're not they're not maintenance free. They degrade. You may have to chase after. And you've got to put that in the into the mix of what you're spending on. What what are you going? Let me just ask, what are you going to do if it doesn't work? Are you going to spend more money? Are you? Are you okay with that?
How do you know that? How do you? I can you answer that question? Two hundred dollars? I mean, there's.
Well, first of all, I'm asking the commissioners.
So as John said, you won't know until we try. And this is best effort for the resident at the sun and residents in that general area.
Yeah.
And I think it's doing the right thing for the community that surrounds that park.
That's good. I'm glad that you mentioned that, you know, the quality of life and all the above you and Miss Curd. I'm hoping that you'll be that caring for us. I'm bothered by the Wawa in terms of the noise. Can you help with that? We we have I don't know, all night long, carboards, alarms. None of which you commissioners here, you're not that close, but it's a quality of life issue. Could you assist us on that? You voted for it. You pushed for it. Especially Miss Courage. You encouraged that. So we're saddled with that. Can you help us?
What are you saying? That was encouraged? I'm not understanding.
Well, you weren't here. So it was encouraged by some of the commissioners.
You're talking about the Wawa that the government was approved?
Yes, sir. We approved it, but you did. We sure did. So, yeah.
Again, very different. It's public township facilities, the big ball court, right?
Yeah.
The Wawa is a private entity that's private property. The structure being built right now, the Western project should provide some sound protection for you or aid in that as that's being completed.
Who's counting on that? Yeah, this this these courts, have you had any official diagnosis on the on the sound?
They've had people out to evaluate it, people from the Sound Barrier Company.
Correct. And what was it? What were the decibels or the violations?
So similar to the prior public comments, you're conflating the violation of those ordinance with a sound of an athletic sport that is only a court on a township owned facility.
Okay, all right, Joe.
So relevant question in terms of say, do you measure before and measure after to see what you've accomplished? But in general, the the goal is to try to put forth a good faith effort to reduce the amount of sound regardless of what you're starting with decimal.
But is the board prepared to go further to spend more money on the on that?
I think the board is prepared to evaluate things and we don't have to commit to any dollar amounts today. I think we have a proposal in place. We've authorized to spend up to that amount. We even suggested to Steve that it does, we do it incrementally to save costs and if the initial phase of mitigation works, we can actually stop there. So I I think you're asking too many theoretical questions that, you know, aren't appropriate, you know, for something that hasn't even, the mitigation hasn't even started yet. But that's why it's okay to ask.
Yeah, I I think it's okay to ask. It's right. I think as a as a resident, that's that's quite a bit of money that you're asking every resident to pay for that. So I I think I think that's a legitimate question.
No, what I was referring to is the the future question. We don't have the answer for.
I don't expect it.
Yeah, but I'm saying is the board decided and we agreed and we asked for public comment. And we appreciate the public comment, but we we felt it was a necessary thing.
Do you think you may have to chase after that same problem?
I just answered that. I said it's too early to say. So we'll reevaluate that after the incremental mitigation is done.
Okay. All right. I was going to make a comment about your code inspector. That you're going to be looking for someone to employ. I would personally put in the in the job description that that person should put a few hours in on Saturday because there's a lot of the various things that happen on on the weekends if people don't get permits for and they try it.
I can stop you on this one. There's already been built it.
Good, good. All right, okay. All right.
And Mr. George, I know you are, if you just could say your name and I just for the record, thank you.
Martin George, two four one four down road.
Great, thank you.
Mister George, I also want to just at least answer you that this has been incremental and we're taking it step by step. I've been working hand in hand with my residents that have been most affected by the situation and it's 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 been really heart wrenching.
Oh, I'm sure.
Yeah, and I I understand and understand what what you're going through. But you know, this is this a public amendment that we put in for them. We put in a by recommendation way back from the Montgomery County Plan Commission.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Thank you. Any any other public comment? Here none. I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
And and before that, we're going to have an executive session with our to discuss legal matters with our attorney. Is a motion and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.